After the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in municipal building and township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 13, 2022.
Thank you. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for Councilwoman Kimberly Francois's invocation.
Oh God, the Creator and Redeemer of all the faithful, here are supplications and through thy infinite love and mercy, graciously grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Anderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Here.
Councilmember Batasne?
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Councilwoman Udine?
Here.
Councilman Bassinella?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
We are on to item number five. There are copies of the agenda over there near the clerk and copies of all the ordinances. It's now, item number five is commendations and proclamations. We have done. Item number six is public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Move then second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. We are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on matters of government may come to the microphone. You may only speak once, no yielding of time. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kiki Anastaskos. I live at 3204 Enclave Circle. And I would like to point the attention of the council to the recent New Jersey State Planning Commission Office of Planning Advocacy document with the title Distribution, Warehousing and Goods Movement, which was adopted just recently on September 7th. And I specifically would like to read from page 23 with regards to overburdened communities. Now, everybody, or at least several people in this room, including the council, are aware of the fact that according to the Department of Environmental Protection, Office of Environmental Justice, Franklin Township is on a list that they have compiled of overburdened communities. And that list, the criteria to be on that list, is that a significant percentage of the population has to be below the poverty line, they have to be, I believe, they have to also be, yeah, here it is, low income, sorry, minority, or limited English-speaking populations. The Office of Environmental Justice has come up with eight particular types of facilities that are not permitted in these overburdened communities. And now I'm reading from page 23. Now warehouses specifically, which is our problem here in Franklin Township, and more particularly in Canal Walk where I live and many of the people here live, is warehouses. So the last paragraph on page 23 of the New Jersey State Planning Commission Office of Planning Advocacy reads with reference to overburdened communities. While warehouses are not included in the list of eight types of facilities specified under the law, a warehouse is not in and of itself a producer of pollution, there is no denying that warehouse operations serve to increase truck traffic volume. This increased traffic volume increases mobile sources of air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions when they are located near communities already disproportionately impacted by environmental harms and risks. Recognizing these and other public health stressors, municipalities whose overburdened, with overburdened communities should, at a minimum, consider zoning changes as part of a master plan reexamination process to exclude certain types of distribution warehouse facilities, parentheses, for example, above 75,000 to 100,000 square feet, including those above three stories. End of, close the paragraph. Now, I'm sure the council is aware that the planning commission's document is a state guideline, it is not a law. But it has, as a guideline, a certain significance for municipalities. Despite home rule, the state is moving clearly in, by establishing the Office of Environmental Justice and by approving and adapting this document, is moving in the direction of trying to protect overburdened communities like Franklin from an excessive number of warehouses, especially those that are most commonly in what we see being built in our community, over 100 square feet by and large, and over three stories. So for example, the warehouses that are proposed in the two applications for Schoolhouse Metlars and the recent application for the 600,000 square foot warehouse immediately adjacent to these warehouses on Metlars and Weston, in the former, in the current horse farm, exceed these criteria. So as a member of the Warehouse Action, Citizens Warehouse Action Group, I would like to request that this council stops any further building of warehouses until a local ordinance is adapted to examine what is the impact of these humongous warehouses that we see in our part of Franklin Township?
Thank you. Your time is up.
And how it affects the different groups in our township. Thank you very much.
I wonder if our attorney before I begin could just clarify because, you know, we've been at a lot of different meetings and sometimes the procedure rules are a little different. I have a comment and a question. Is that allowed if I can fit it within a reasonable amount of time?
I think that's the mayor.
Mayor Kramer, what do you think?
Yes, you can make a comment and a question, but if you ask a question and want it to be answered while you're there, the time that's taken to make the, to answer it is out of your time.
Okay, well, you know that I normally don't read from a script, but I'm going to to try to stay on track, okay? My comment, my comment only.
Name and address.
Shirley Tallman, and I'm on 57 Tallman Lane in Canal Walk. And good evening, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members, especially our councilwoman, who has done so much for us already to stop some of this 18-wheeler idling situation and congestion. And also administrators. I've, I've had a change of mind and a change of heart recently. And especially if the rumor is true that I've heard that Blackstone Link Logistics has taken some legal action against the residents of Franklin Township and our local government, through our local government. We and I think that, I think I can speak for the rest of us, and if I can't, well, they'll let me know later. But we're, we're not the enemy, and you're not the enemy. They're the enemy. And they've been our enemy for some time, and that has caused a lot of stress. And I told you at one meeting that my pants were falling down and everybody thought it was funny, but you know what? They're even more loose today. So yeah, we're feeling it. We're all feeling it. We're afraid of losing what we have, what we've worked for and what we deserve as our human right when we purchased our property. But we're not so afraid that we're not going to speak out, and obviously you know that because we have and we've spoken out quite well. I vary from my script, so let me find it again. You can't be held without fault. I'm sorry to have to say that. You cannot be held without fault. The planning commission or planning board cannot be held without fault. And certainly the zoning board cannot be held without fault. But I don't know that tonight's the night to bring all of that up, but I just wanted to mention it. You know, you have a piece of this, certainly. But I believe it's not time to explore that here. I'm proposing that we not wave from this fight to stop warehouse sprawl. We don't do that because regardless of what they throw at us with their billion, multi-billion dollar structure, that does concern me, obviously. In my opinion, public opinion can, can really win this battle for us, for you, and because you are representatives for us. Public opinion can win, and it has won throughout history. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been here. We won't be here. We wouldn't be here today, right? I mean, I'm not going to cite examples, but we all know our history. And I ask you, Mayor Kramer, and council and administrators, to keep that in the forefront of your minds as we continue the struggle for our human rights to continue living in peace and harmony with ourselves on our land. That's a tall order, I know. But we put you there, obviously, because we believed in you. And I don't think that's a dramatic statement. I think it's true. We voted, some of us, a lot of us, for Mayor Kramer and for our councilpeople because we believed in you. And now we ask you to believe in yourself and do the right thing by your residents. And that's the end of my comment. Am I out of time or can I put my factual question out?
We're out of time.
Can I come back?
No.
You drive a hard bargain. We'll find a way around it.
My name is Evelyn Silverstein. I live at 11 Hardenberg Street in Canal Walk. I really was very dismayed recently to find out that now, in addition to the Link Logistics Warehouse development on Schoolhouse Road, another monster warehouse is proposed to be built along Metlars Road, Franklin Township's designated scenic byway. I never realized that a 40 to foot, to 50-foot-high concrete structure was considered scenic. I don't think anyone in this room would consider a wall of concrete to be scenic. Some years ago, the township carved out several tracts of land to establish senior communities. Very wise. Bring in scores of senior citizens who will pay all the taxes and not burden the school system. Very wise indeed. However, most of you, probably all of you, weren't involved in that, but in the infinite wisdom of the council that did that, led by your professional economic advisor, the town council is now on the path to destroy the way of life of these seniors because they neglected to adjust the zoning adjoining the Canal Walk community. Additionally, in the midst of a COVID epidemic, the requirements of height and land mass of potential structures was amended to allow for increased height and increased land area that that structure will take up. With the Schoolhouse Road address, don't you think that the GPS, whoops, is this on? Yeah. The GPS systems of many of the tractor trailers will direct them as they leave Route 287 to travel along Weston Canal Road to the light at Schoolhouse Road. After all, the address is Schoolhouse Road. I imagine you do because now I see on both sides of the entire length of Schoolhouse Road, signs stipulating no stopping or standing. That's for the trucks, I'm sure. Several of us have seen some 18-wheelers attempting the left turn from Weston Canal Road to turn onto Schoolhouse Road. It was not a pretty sight. In fact, one of the trucks actually cut through the Summer Fields Residence Community to get to Randolph Road. And that truck wasn't even going to Schoolhouse Road, it was going to Randolph Road. By the way, can you tell me what the weight is of one of those loaded trucks? Some roads, I think, have weight limits, and I'd venture to guess those trucks are well over the weight limit for Schoolhouse Road. In addition to destroying this local road with overweight 18-wheelers, the diesel emissions, the noise pollution from scores of trucks driving past much of our community is a detriment to our health and well-being. Just visualize the school buses picking up the children at Summer Fields with scores of 18-wheelers on the same road. I ask you now publicly to establish a moratorium on warehouse development in Franklin Township until independent noise and air pollution studies based on the proposed project in the Canal Walk area are undertaken. That's the very least you can do to protect the residents of your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel. If you would give me a little bit of latitude, what I have to say is approximately three minutes and 30 seconds.
You have five minutes.
Oh, very good then. Thank you. So my name is Marlon Kwan. I am at 28 Jay's Corner, also at Canal Walk. I would like to address the council in regards to the last planning board meeting. As a citizen of this town, I've come to believe that some members of the planning board have lost their objectivity, obligation, responsibility, as well as their moral compass to the residents of this town. I address the council because you may not be aware of the actions at their last meeting this past week. The applicant was Link Logistics. A staff member to the planning board abruptly interrupted an examiner and testified on behalf of and in defense of the applicant. Then other cross-examiners were cut off, limiting their questioning when unlimited time was clearly established at the outset of the meeting. Both events not only reflected a prejudice against due process, but also reflected a bias against this town and these residents. Lastly, when the vote was taken and the application was approved five to three, two paid staffers greeted the applicant professionals in the auditorium with big smiles and handshakes as they left the room, as if they had just won the Super Bowl. All of these actions reflect the clear favoritism within the paid staff towards the developer Link Logistics. I asked the council, who do they work for? Who do they represent? Adding to this point, I believe a staffer had testified at 2020 rezoning and mapping ordinance hearing and was asked by council twice, will this have any impact on existing residential communities or its residents? That question was asked two separate times during questioning, and both times he answered with a resounding no. These answers were clearly false and misleading to the council, further evidence of favoritism and partiality. Therein lies our collective problem. Residents of this town and township council deserve better. I do not say these things lightly, nor are they false. You can check the recordings and the videos. There has also been some, some talk and fear of lawsuits, but when is enough enough? Therefore, I ask the council to consider the following. Delay the final vote on the B-9 Cotton Tail application, which was the, which was the point of that meeting, until all questions are asked and adequately answered by the applicant to the council's satisfaction, not just the planning board's satisfaction. I don't know it should be, and I think so, are just unacceptable when they're answering Secondly, place a moratorium, as others have said, on all pending applications before the planning board until data is collected on the number of tractor trailers and noise pollution levels. And restrict the hours of operation within a certain circumference of residential homes. No one, including the planning board to date, knows how many warehouses or trucks are actually running in these areas. These new proposed warehouses are speculative. It's allowed. They have no idea, however, what the traffic will be or at what times. They merely use books. Therefore, with the noise ordinance already in place in residential communities, that should be strictly enforced surrounding those communities. Third, stop the issuance of variances. For example, impervious ground cover limits are excused for almost every single project. B-9 Cotton Tail was no exception. They were granted one. Previous variance approvals was their argument, should not be a precedent on a new or different project on the same site. Why can't warehouse developers meet these standards without variances? Let me tell you why. Because each square foot the township gives into turns into square feet of larger building chargeable by Link Logistics to its tenants. They may make more money while we bear the cost through oversized buildings, greater traffic and pollution. Don't issue variances like candy. Keep to the rules the township has set. Lastly, I just want to thank the three planning board commissioners who voted their conscience and actually voted no, and I thank you, the council members, for your attention.
Good evening, council persons. My name is John Lo Presti. I live at 22 Payne Way in Canal Walk. And basically, I was standing behind Marlon Kwan to finish his presentation if for some reason he had run out of time, but Mr. Mayor, you allowed him all of the time that he needed. And all I want to say, because I have spoken before at these meetings, and all I would like to say is that I'm one of about 2,000 residents in Canal Walk who are hoping that you will realize that most of us are elderly and many, many of us have medical problems. And having a warehouse across the street from our community would not bear well. So we hope, we really hope and pray that all of you will do the right thing. God bless you and thank you very much.
Toby Kramer, 55, Bryan Court. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think I can speak for everyone when I say I don't see any way that 18-wheelers can go on these roads, on these one-lane roads. They're country roads. So I have two questions for you. Has a traffic report been done? In order to build these huge developments, does the traffic report need to be considered and followed? And if, and if it has been done, three questions, can we see it? Because I, I would like to know who is saying Schoolhouse Road can handle 18-wheelers or Metlars Lane? And I know you're going to say, oh, they're not going to be allowed to go there. They are there, they go there, they're there every single day. So I'd like to see a traffic report, and if you've done one, please tell us now.
So there is a traffic report that's submitted by the applicant, so that's in the file, it's on file, and yes, you can review it.
What about the council's traffic report?
I wasn't, I was in the middle of a sentence. It's okay. Sorry. So remember, this application's not before the council, so the council can't authorize a traffic report and put it in the planning board, so it's a, it's a planning board matter. The planning board, however, has an engineer who also has traffic experts. So the way the process works is that the applicant submits a traffic report, and then the planning board's engineer does, reviews that report, and then if necessary, does their own independent traffic report. So it's all within the planning board jurisdiction. It's not, it's not the council's jurisdiction.
Okay, so you've heard tonight that people feel that the planning board has not been equitable, and people are very, very concerned that there's something wrong on this planning board because they're not listening to both sides. Can you assure us that somehow the council will assess whether the planning board is being equitable?
Well, first, the planning board is an independent board, right? So it, it is appointed and it's autonomous, so the council doesn't have, their actions are not appealable to us, and we don't have the ability to, to reach down and change what they do. I wasn't at the last, the, the last planning board meeting. In fact, I, I don't really go to the planning board meeting, so I don't, I can't assess whether that's accurate or not accurate. I, I just know that over the course of the last 20 years, having been involved in a substantial amount of litigation that comes out of the planning board, that that's not the reputation that the planning board has. And I know that you, you may, may feel differently about that, but that's clearly not the reputation that the board has. And of course, we have professionals that work for the administration, and I certainly have confidence in them. So I'm not really sure what, what happened or occurred or who the people were involved, so I don't know.
I will review the tape.
Yeah. Is there someone who's willing to look into it and to answer the concerns?
I will review the tape, and if I see things, I have some zoning board experience. If I see things that I think are improper, I will convey it. I have to follow the rules of government. I can convey it to him or to him, and then they can take proper actions. But I can't, I'm not going to go to the planning board and tell them what to do. I'm not allowed to do that.
Does a traffic report, shouldn't it be public? Shouldn't we all be able to?
It is. They're all part of the application, ma'am. In fact, the B-9 Schoolhouse application, I reviewed the entire traffic impact assessment this afternoon. All applications that go in front of the planning board of that nature are required to have a, an engineer prepare a traffic impact assessment. And it's available in the planning office. You can certainly review it in the planning office. You can file an Oprah request if you want a copy of it. It's a public document. It's part of an official application before the planning board or the zoning board, whichever it might be. In this case, it was the planning board. I believe you're discussing B-9 Schoolhouse, B-9 Cotton Tail, which was the application in front of the planning board last week, not B-9 Schoolhouse, which is the one adjacent to Canal Walk. But that, that also had a traffic impact assessment done. All commercial applications to go in front of the planning board or any major subdivisions are required to have one.
And the entirety of the file is every?
Entirely, absolutely.
Including, by the way, the town
Including, by the way, the township's professionals' review of those reports.
Correct.
You know, my concern, the developer's going to say that the traffic is going to be fine and the roads are fine. We know that. I would like to know that our township government is advocating for its people. That's our concern, and that's all of our concern. We need you on our side.
I don't, what I said was, I don't have any other further answers to that. I told you that each applicant is required to file an engineer, a professional engineer...
But who's required to say no?
It's not, the planning board, as the township attorney has already indicated, is a quasi-judicial board. They're autonomous, and their purpose is to make judgments on applications, as is the zoning board of adjustment. Not this township council, not the township manager, not the township planner, not the township attorney. That is those boards' legal statutory responsibility. It's not whether or not the township manager or the township council advocate on behalf of anything. Those applications, those applicants have the legal right to make those applications to those boards for the use of the property that they own. And while it's, I understand, and I sympathize and empathize and all of those other thizes that I might have for all of you, I understand that. That's, my responsibility as the township manager is to ensure that the staff members conduct all of their reviews of plans. That's what I was doing today. I was in the planning department, reviewing the B-9 Schoolhouse application, reviewing all of the staff reports that were provided to the applicant today, the planner's report, the police report, the health report, the engineering report, to ensure that all reviews were done appropriately. I reviewed the environmental impact statement, the traffic impact assessment. I don't do that for every application, I will tell you. If I did, I wouldn't be able to be the township manager because that's all I would be doing. But in this particular case, given the sensitivity of the issue, I did. And I gave my input to the engineer and to the planner on what I reviewed.
And are you allowed to talk?
Your time, your time, ma'am.
Be open, and tell us what you're recommending.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time.
Ma'am, I didn't make, I will tell you, I didn't make recommendations. I had conversations with the engineer and the planner about their reviews so that I had a better understanding of what it was.
Thank you very much.
One thing I've got to say is, I would love to answer your questions directly, but we've, as you may have seen in the papers, we've been sued now six times. I have been quoted extensively. It does not serve your purpose and our purpose for medium comment because it can and will be used against you. And the audience, by the way, was also quoted, not in words, but in your sentiments.
Correct, Mayor, and we've had this conversation about litigation before, but certainly the township council taking a position that they're going to advocate to stop an application is not in the best legal interest of, that's just not a position that we're publicly going to take. And once again, as of today, I guess I read the last two of them today, we now have been sued six times over the...
Six times, yes. In the last two weeks.
I'm Roberta Henry, and I live at 3209 Enclave Circle for 14 years. My question is, I understand that you all are sympathetic to what we've been saying, but how many of you have come up out to look at the site where those warehouses are going to be? Well, one person, two, three, okay. So my other question...
I live a quarter of a mile away, so I'm there all the time.
Right. My other question is, if your parents lived in one of these developments, would you feel the same way as you do now?
I'm going to answer that question. The answer is, if that was the standard, it would be a different world, right? But that's not the standard. So the standard is not, the planning board doesn't make, they don't make those kind of judgments. They have, there's ordinances, there's state laws, they apply them. That's what they do because there's, people own property, it's no different. You know, those same laws apply when they built Canal Walk. Those laws applied to the approval for Canal Walk. And I was here, and I remember the controversy over building Canal Walk and over building Summerfield when it was approved as a senior community and then it was converted by the legislature to a non-senior community. Those are all of the laws. If the council could have said, would you have wanted your grandmother to live in that community? That community might not have been built, but that's not, that's never the standard in the law. Look, it's sympathetic to all of us, and we're all sympathetic.
I'm just asking for a different viewpoint.
Yeah, except that, but the point of the viewpoint is this, is that there's lots of arguments that can be made with regards to this development. The standard isn't, would we like it all to go away? Because if that was the standard, councils would make things go away all the time. But the net of that is, when you make all of that development go away, all of the rest of you will have to buy all of that property.
My third, my third...
Trust me, I invented the box. I understand how to think outside of it.
Mrs. Coleman?
My third question is, with all these warehouses and everything going up, when are our taxes going to start going down?
They did the last year for most people.
Well...
Most people, excuse me, excuse me. Most people in towns' taxes decreased last year.
Okay, I'm just asking if there's going to be more decrease in taxes as all these warehouses are going up?
That will certainly depend on the amount of tax revenue that they generate, and that's based on property values, that's based on, you know, recent sales that the assessor uses. So there's a lot of factors involved in that, and remember that, let me finish. Remember that only approximately 15% of your tax bill is related to municipal government that this council has control over.
Thank you.
So I can't speak for the school board, I can't speak for the fire districts, I can't speak for Somerset County. We can only speak for the township council, and that's a variable from year to year.
And who's going to be responsible for the tractor-trailers? I'm only saying because last week, as I was coming out of Canal Walk, a tractor-trailer made a U-turn right in front of my car. And what was I supposed to do except slam on my brakes? I mean, who's there to monitor what these trucks are going to be doing? It's just another traffic.
And it's traffic in the most congested state in the United States, and that's something that absolutely occurs on a regular basis anywhere outside of Franklin.
I understand that, but where...
I can't give you an answer where I can say that the police department will be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
They won't.
They won't. People violate traffic laws every day. Right now, in this town, there are probably 15 or 20 violations occurring as I'm speaking. So those things are things that we cannot give you an answer to.
Right. I'm just talking because we are on country roads.
Good evening, Mayor Kramer, members of council. My name's Brad Hagenbottom, 528 Carlton Street, Bound Brook. I was a nine-year councilman in Bound Brook, including council president, Air Force veteran, but I'm here representing Solar Landscape and Asbury Park Company. I live in Bound Brook. We have an active community solar project going at 55 Jiffy Road. I know, Mayor, you've been very helpful, and so has your township manager, in working with your green team, and we will be signing people up. And the way we do these programs are, it's going to be some people in Franklin Township who benefit or adjacent communities. The way we do community solar, at least 50% has to go to low-to-moderate income households. We work with nonprofits and other local entities to help them, and we also do job training. New Jersey Community Solar is a very competitive process, which is why I'm here. We have three projects coming up in the next round. They haven't announced a date yet. I'm not going to ask you for a resolution or a letter yet, but I will very soon. And again, those will be three more projects that'll directly benefit Franklin Township and its residents. Basically, those who don't know, New Jersey Community Solar, we put solar on rooftops, on landfills, on brownfields. It doesn't go to that property, it goes to the grid. We get subscriber credits, and we sell those to residential people who get typically between 21 and 25% off of their electric bill. No credit check? Fire? Good. No credit check, no buried exit. So, and again, we also work with our green team, which helps sustainability. So just wanted to say hello, not talk about warehouses, and we'll be in contact soon about these upcoming projects. Is there any questions on this at this time? Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. Ludmilla Jackson, 16, Domino Road. In my area, in our area, we have a lot of senior people and older than 50 and 60 years old. Because we're, for us, it's not that easy to do regular exercises, and we have not one decent fitness center in our area. All towns around us have a beautiful, Hillsborough has two YMCA, Pinnacle, whatever, they all have pools, saunas, and wonderful, wonderful, the East Brunswick, a lot, all towns around us have a beautiful, beautiful fitness centers. I would like to ask you if you can help us to build, we used to have a pool and fitness in a hotel, which one was demolished hotel and build the, I don't know what was built there, so now we don't have anything. I don't know, me personally, my health depends on my exercises. For older person, much hard to do regular exercises. Sometimes swimming is the only way. So I would like to help, I don't know if other people, I would like to help to build nice decent fitness center with the pools, saunas, so we can be kind of healthy. And it's like around Colonial Park, somewhere in this area, because we have nothing, nothing.
So we are working on diligently. We are working diligently on getting a YMCA in town.
Thank you so much.
Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive. So just two things I want to talk about. One is, just want to give an update to everybody. I think October 29th, there'll be actually Trunk Reap Festival at Johns Plaza that'll be produced by, I think, in conjunction with the Hamilton Street Board, Parks and Rec Association, don't quote me because I don't have a flyer in front of me, but, and some other people. I think it'll be one to five on Johns Plaza on Hamilton Street. I just want to give everybody an update to have a save the date out there to actually do that. My second main thing that I wanted to talk about was just the activity for support. We always talk about YMCA, but we don't talk about support for what we have currently right now, so I would like to make sure that everybody's in support of what's going on with the youth center, and we make sure that adolescents are actually in the activities to actually be a part of that as much as possible. If you don't know, make sure you come by and see it, because we talk about all the problems that we got, but we don't talk about some of the solutions that we come up with also. So that was one thing. My next ask is directly for Resolution 340 and 341. That is actually on agenda, I want them to be actually removed and not voted on tonight, to actually be removed from your agenda items and put out for public discussion. The reason why I'm asking for those specific ones directly is because they have to deal with cannabis and actually cannabis regulations that are actually coming down from the State Department. This is a bigger do, far as items are concerned, and I would like that to be a public discussion item. The reason why these recommendations are being done currently right now is because the applications have to go before the State Department to actually get approved, and actually, some of the times, some of the stuff that's going to be going on with these applications, we need to make sure that they're going to have community benefits as a whole. That means the tax businesses, the taxes that are actually going to be collected from these people, and actually making sure that they're going to adequate programs that actually be done. I had this brief discussion with the deputy mayor about this, about my concerns, and specifically making a concern to Mr. Wright directly, because if you look at some of the applications that are there, they're mainly concentrated in a specific ward. And again, the reason why I'm saying that directly to Mr. Wright is because, again, if you're not being an advocate for this and you're not helping change this, and the tax revenue is going to go to the right things, we have a problem. And like I said, I'm just making sure that that's something that you're being very much aware of, because the reason why this came about altogether from a State Department level is because the war on drugs itself. So a lot of times, this stuff that's getting approved for these new centers that are actually coming up is the benefits of what happened to the people that couldn't sell these things in the past. Now they made it legal. So what happens to that revenue to actually help the deterrence for these kids that are actually going to be in these specific areas at all? So some of these applications that are coming up, we need to make sure that we're being very cognizant of the community involvement that these people are going to be a part of, where they're going to be located, how they're going to benefit the community, and actually, you know, make sure that the benefits is going to be there. So, and because this is actually going to be in a certain ward where the youth center currently is, I want to make sure that the exposure rate for the kids and other things that are going on, that for some of these applications are very much aware, because at the county, the county just received, I think, from their opioid crisis, they just issued $31,000 to teach people about what's going on narcotics at all, and other gateway drugs at all. What it is, is that because Franklin Township is different, it can do its own thing. I asked the town council, what are you guys doing about it? What are you guys stepping up to do at this present timeframe? We have, I think, about six applications that's going to be approved based on, I think, regulations-wise that are coming down, coming down our pipeline. I think that's what, I don't know, might be misquoted, but I think there's potentially six applications that might come out of this whole CRC, things that might get approved, and we need to look at, we need to look at things. Mr. Volcker could correct me later on if I'm speaking.
It very well may be six, but remember that there are three types of licenses, Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Not six retail locations.
Yeah, not six retail locations.
And there's been no indication from the state of New Jersey as to how many in each municipality that will be, how many licenses will be provided for those businesses looking to open in each individual town yet.
Well, I know we have probably 30 applications that was open already.
The state of New Jersey has 30 applications that have...
No, so based on what's going on in the resolution, you guys can read it directly yourself. But based on the resolution, it was that there, actually, there's been 30 applications for retail licenses that actually want to be done in Franklin at this specific timeframe. So again, that's open, that's open public records. I don't have nothing to do with that. I got the information, I'm just coming here to voice opinion based on what it is, and I want the public to understand because, again, it impacts us. And again, sometimes we don't have this public conversation because we just get resolutions and y'all just vote down the board. No, this one needs to be separate because this impacts a specific community, and you guys need to be held accountable for actually that going forward at all. So again, the ramifications of your results when you vote on stuff needs to not be across the board. So I'm asking you to move 30, 40, 22, 30, 40, and 22, 30, 40, 341 off the agenda and have that for a public, open discussion going forward at all.
My name is Andrew Wallace, 33, Corlott Drive, Franklin Township. Me myself, I'm one of these people that he actually talks about. I've been a victim of police brutality three times by Franklin Police Department, grew up low-income, and have many of my counterparts suffer from the war on drugs. I'm successful myself, so I'm perfectly fine, but my counterparts that's still stuck in the low-income communities are not reaping the benefits of what's going on with the marijuana act. I've been fighting this now since the beginning of it. I know there are inequity that's going on across the nation right now, less than 4% minority ownership. I'm asking also that you remove 340 and 341 from your agenda until we have public discussion, mainly because if you don't know the stats of what's going on across the nation, there's no reason to even vote on it or discuss it, until you have the public involved and you can get the actual facts of what's going on and how it can be equitable, at least in Franklin Township. According to what's going on right now in our sister community in Middlesex and New Brunswick, they just awarded seven licenses. Them licenses are not helping nobody low-income. They don't have no low-income ownership, you don't have minority ownership, you have licenses going out right now in New Brunswick that's not really going to help the low-income community stop crime or deal with any of these factors that's been causing and plaguing the community for the last century. So I'm asking again for y'all to remove 340 and 341 until we have a public discussion. What I will put forward is that in that public discussion, that we roll anybody who wants an actual marijuana retail license or location in Franklin Township, that there's actually community involvement, that we can actually speak to these business owners, that there's interaction with the community. There's actually community members that's going on right now and applying for licenses that live in Franklin Township, and I don't see anybody on that list being supported by our council. So I'm asking y'all to remove this until y'all can actually find out the residents that live here that are applying for these licenses that can actually help benefit the community, not only from a tax revenue standpoint, because they live here, they have homes here, and they'll be able to provide extra money and revenue here, but also because, again, they're part of our community. I'm going to keep it short. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Jerry Fazio, I live at sixty-one Patriots Way in Canal Walk. Many of my neighbors have spoken already about the warehouse brawl which we are opposing. However, I have one simple question to ask. Recently, President Biden passed the Inflation Reduction Act of nineteen twenty-two, and as part of that act, there was a comment in there that talked about cutting carbon pollution dramatically by up to forty percent by two thousand and thirty. My question to you, to the council and to the mayor is that, what do you guys think? Have you thought about it at all? And where are you going with that? And maybe you should probably consider that as part of your thinking about your planning for all the new warehouses coming in, and I'm sure the eighteen-wheelers that will be running through our neighborhoods will also be impacting the increasing, not decreasing, the amount of carbon emission. Any comment? Are we thinking about it? Do we realize that that's now law?
So, we are.
Good evening, my name is Michael Bryan, I live at forty Bryan Court in Canal Walk. My question is, who appoints the planning board?
Council.
The whole council votes on?
Each member of the plan, well, there are a number of citizen members that are appointed. Some of the members of the planning board are, doesn't the manager appoint one?
No, not the, I don't, I do not appoint a planning board member.
All done by resolution of the council.
Right.
Done by resolution of the council.
There's a, there's an employee, yeah, I stand corrected, Mayor, you're right. So there is an employee appointed to the board annually, that in our case is a professional engineer that supervises the pole works department.
So if somebody applies to be a member of the planning board, does the council vote on that applicant?
Yes.
Or is it appointed by, the person appointed by a specific person?
No, it's done by the council.
Has this council appointed any member to the current planning board?
Entire planning board is appointed by the council.
So this council appointed the entire planning board as it stands today? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Robert Peterson, sixty-six Wilson Road. Let me just open by saying, you guys do, you know, it's a terrible job, it's so many, I can only imagine how hard it must be to be up there, but having said that, you guys have outdone yourselves once again. It's amazing, it's amazing. Thirty-four retail pot locations, that's what you have here as part of this agenda. Why? Why so many? What, I mean, what is the goal here? If you follow just simply the alcohol commission rules and not counting grandfather cases, you would be allowed one retail location per three thousand residents. Do the math, we'd be looking at eighteen to twenty-five, if you rolled it out slowly, but nope, you guys have thrown caution to the wind. You stated, number one, whereas the township council believes the permitting cannabis, blah, 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 will help create jobs and economic opportunity. Well, I looked at some of these business retail ownerships, they're not, most of them are not members of this town, they're not going to hire local talent. This is a dream, you guys, you're just making stuff up, whereas this and whereas that, it's crazy. Have you seen the map of the locations? I did, I Google mapped it, I'll be sharing it with anybody in this room that would like to see a copy of it. It looks like a bulwark against New Brunswick. Kind of reminds me of the scene in The Godfather where the heads of the five families all met and decided how they were going to carve up the territory for heroin sales. There's no limit, by the way, either. Your resolution, be it resolved, whereas imposes no limits on the number of licensed cannabis establishments, starting with a full load here, how many are you going to stop with? And now, having written your resolution, how are you even going to dial back on it now? What's the number? A hundred? Guys, you know, again, you have a tough job, but man, you, you've got two shovels in your hands and you just won't stop digging. You've gone all in, and I think your goal is to make us the beacon of potdom for the entire state, and I just want to know why? What are you thinking? The other topic that I had for tonight, why is Franklin Township in the business of buying electricity?
Hang on one second.
What is that about?
Hang on one second, sir. Is that the end of his time, Madam Clerk? Was that the end of his?
You're going to have to, you're going to have to literally be kidding me if you're going to cut me off.
Excuse me.
Got to literally be kidding me.
Excuse me, Mr. Peterson, I'm trying to clear it up. I'm trying to clear it up. Did I forget to reset? Are you, you're not timing? All right, so I'm going to give you two and a half minutes.
Thank you, but that was my last statement again. I know you guys are doing the best you can, but for goodness sake, what is going on? I don't get it.
So I'm going to respond to that. What is going on is that that basically, well, I'll let you explain.
So, that, that, that resolution does not grant anybody a license. All that resolution is certified that the location for those meets the township ordinance, the licenses are issued by the state. They're not going to issue thirty-five retail licenses in Franklin Township, that's just not going to happen. There's a limit on the number, that, this, if you did thirty-five of each one of the categories, it would be more licenses than they're planning on issuing in the first five years. So the answer is, so it's not every one of those in there, all we, all we're doing required by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission to certify whether or not somebody meets the criteria of our local zoning ordinance, that's all we're doing.
That's all it is, is anyone who meets the zoning requirements, we're saying, yes, you meet the zoning requirement. I'm going to repeat him, we're not giving them a license. We could give, send two thousand of these to the state, we're still only going to get probably six. So, you said the number was eighteen, we're probably going to get six.
And that's if we got one of each category of.
That's what I'm saying, that's the different categories of license, not, and that, that list.
That's not retail.
And what the township attorney just said, and Mr. Peterson, while you left the microphone, you made a comment, a second comment, that.
I have absolutely no idea what you're speaking of.
But perhaps you could have clarified it, but, and then, you can certainly call me, and I don't know what you're talking about as far as buying or selling electricity, but you walked away, so I can't answer the question.
I assume it's energy aggregation.
Correct, and that was as a result of a petition that was filed by citizens, so that didn't come from the council originally.
But, you know, it may play well to the audience to say we're bringing in all this pot and all this, we're making it Pot City, et cetera, et cetera. But the fact is, is we're just saying people meet certain criteria and let the state decide which ones can do the best job of it. If we're, we're, we're in a place where people do want to sell this, and we have, we have said, yes, we want to be part of that, but if you want us to create a mechanism that's going to review all these to the final detail, that's the state's going to do again, then you've just added a tremendous amount of cost to the town, and that will be difficult to regulate.
And it is, in fact, the state of New Jersey that will issue those licenses, it is, in fact, the state of New Jersey that will vet each applicant, and the only thing, as the mayor and the attorney said, the only responsibility that the township has at this particular point is to determine whether or not the applicant meets the appropriate zoning regulations of the township, and if you look at that list of retail establishments, what you will see is that they are all in general business and neighborhood business zones, which is where retail business takes place, and so that's why they're all where they are. Where we have retail space available, there are applicants who are making applications for licenses to the state. And as far as where the tax revenue that will be generated by the sale, wholesale, both wholesale and retail of cannabis goes, is the bulk of that tax revenue goes to the state of New Jersey to fund those programs that Mr. Guy and the other gentleman spoke about as far as the equity laws that were included in the legalization of cannabis sales, and the tax revenue that's generated by the township, that's directed to the township, goes into the general fund, as does all tax money other than open space that goes in the open space trust. So, that's the law, not a decision that the township council has to make.
Among the things that get funded by the general fund are things like the youth center.
Aving.
Okay.
All of the general government expenses.
Next, please.
Is this better? Okay, I'm glad you made it perfect, because I am speaking to you. I never planned to speak tonight, I only came to listen, but you said something that really, really upset me. The area of the street of Schoolhouse Road between Randolph Road and Western Canal Road is where Canal Walk is, and you said, what's the difference if all the trucks come back and forth? Because we are in the most densely populated state.
I didn't say that, ma'am.
Practically.
I did not say that.
Practically.
No, I did not say practically that.
No, I said practically.
What I said was, the woman who made her comment said that a truck violated the traffic laws in front of her.
Okay.
And what I said is, those types of violations occur frequently, and I cannot assure anyone that there will be police there to do that enforcement twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Those violations will occur no matter what the police department does. They have stepped up their enforcement, and they have done, they have focused their efforts recently on Randolph Road, because there were complaints from this audience in previous meetings about trucks sitting on the side of the road. They've visited every business in, in the stretch of Randolph Road and talked to management about those violations. There's a message board up to alert truck drivers, there's increased signage, all of those things were a direct response to the concerns of, in primarily Canal Walk residents, where we agreed that we would step up enforcement. What I said was that I cannot assure anyone that it will never happen. Some of the statements are absolutely correct. There are commercial businesses and warehouses that have been in that area of Franklin Township that predate Canal Walk. Heller Park Lane, Jensen Drive, Belmont, Cotton Tail, and even sections of Randolph Road were developed before Canal Walk was built. Trucks have been in that area of Franklin Township for many, many, many years prior to Canal Walk being built. I can't give you an assurance that they'll never violate the law.
Okay, but you did compare this to all the traffic in New Jersey.
What I said is that.
And we should not become a twenty-seven or a Route One or the turnpike where all the trucks are going back and forth.
And no one ever put that as any, now you're putting words in my mouth. I never said that. What I said was what I said, which is, we live in a very congested area and traffic violations occur on a very regular basis.
Excuse me, it hasn't been congested on Schoolhouse Road.
Still not.
Between Randolph and Western Canal Road. It's never been congested.
And it's still not.
Right.
I agree.
And it will be.
I drive it often.
It will be, we'll have trouble even getting out of that development.
I, I don't anticipate that, but I will tell you that, that's, that's the purpose of all of the vetting process of the planning board and traffic impact assessments being done, and I don't believe that that will occur, but I believe that we need to do in the application process what needs to be done to make it as difficult as possible for trucks to access these locations from Schoolhouse Road from the direction of Western Canal Road. That was one of the review issues that I raised, and it's included in the engineer's report. The benign Schoolhouse recommendation for driveway for the truck from the engineer who reviewed it is that you can physically construct the driveway so that it can only be a left turn in and a right turn out. So if someone was coming to that location with a truck, they would have to come from the Randolph Road direction, and they would have to leave in the Randolph Road direction. That was something that I had a discussion with, with Mr. Cohen, who's the attorney representing your homeowners association, in meetings with the township staff about that particular application, and I made sure that the engineer made that recommendation and, and requirement in his engineering report in the review of that plan.
Okay, so you think it's still sensible that these warehouses be built across the street from the senior community?
I think it's sensible, but if that, if that warehouse is to be approved, which I don't have any say in, what I do have say in is in dealing with my staff, telling them that I believe that that's the appropriate way to deal with the driveway, should it be approved.
Okay.
Beverly Lawson, two thousand and four Amwell Road. I'm going to agree with a guy and a couple other people who mentioned the marijuana things. I know you said that it's just a license thing, the state has to approve it, but it should be tabled for public discussion. That being said, you also said there are six licenses that will be issued, if I got that correct? Possibly?
No, actually, so we don't anticipate any more than six, but we don't know that we will get six. The state of New Jersey has yet to determine the location of all of the retail wholesale and, and cultivation licenses.
Will this town get six, or is this six?
We don't, we don't know. The state of New Jersey has not indicated the number of licenses.
Okay, so it's possible there could be six of them in this town.
But there are, again, multiple types of licenses.
Yeah, I can get that. So, again, it should be tabled and it should be up for public discussion. All right, that being said, back to your ordinance on stopping and standing prohibited on certain streets. On Demont Lane between New Brunswick Road and Eastern Avenue, where the benches are located, in that little park section, I've noticed that there's no stopping or standing signs put there. Okay, I don't live in that section, but I used to go over there and walk, so I used to park along that side and walk. So now it seems like, because I don't live there, I'm not allowed to use that side of the street, that's benches or anything.
That's actually been no stopping or standing for at least thirty years. I've actually, at least.
They've been always up there in certain spots.
We're there, in fact, we actually just recently, within the last six months, had a complaint.
They're new signs?
No, not new signs, the signs were, we went and did the historic street view from Google, which could go back to two thousand and seven, so I could go back fifteen years, and the same exact sign in the same exact location was there when it was questioned when the sign was put up.
So in the past, people have parked there, so you're saying now if we park there, we may be told?
We don't allow parking on the grass area that, between the walkway and edge of the road. It's township maintained property, and we don't allow parking there. That's been no stopping or standing, like I said, since at least nineteen eighty-five, when I first started working.
Like I say, people are, you know, I see cars there at times, I'm just saying, if I'm there and I'm walking, what are the chances of me being told to ticket it?
Well, you were prior, you were formerly a police officer, you should be able to answer that question without me asking.
Well, I never see the cop riding around ticketing anyone, so I'm curious.
And your husband's a high police officer, and I went to the police academy with, so you can ask him.
I really don't see the police ticketing anyone, so I'm just curious, like if I'm there, would it really be that much of an issue? Or would it be, could you please just move your car?
The discretion of a police officer, right, Mrs. Lawson?
Okay, all right.
You were a police officer, you know the law.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. And my other question is, the township was issued what they call COVID money, I don't know the exact terminology of it.
American Rescue.
American Rescue, thank you. And they were given like seven million dollars.
Correct.
All right, I realize none of that money has been spent, so my question is, what are we planning on spending this money on? Is anything in particular, or we're just going to hold it and get the interest on it so we get more money?
But you don't get interest on it, and, and several of the ideas have been talked about here in council meetings, one of which is to partner with Somerset County and a share of their money, as well as Rockville Community College, to rehabilitate and occupy the Tulipwood House on Hamilton Street to provide. the Tulipwood House on Hamilton Street, to provide Rockville Community College programming for those who can't get to the main campus in Branchburg. So that's one, and that's several million dollars of the $7 million to do all of that work there. And then, other issues that have been discussed and have yet to be decided are the replacement of, of antiquated water mains in the census tracts in the 4th Ward, where the system is the oldest, and one of the primary purposes of the American Rescue Plan was replacement of aging water infrastructure in neighborhoods that need it most, which are those neighborhoods that meet the census tract areas off of Hamilton Street, that actually qualifies for the CDBG grant money every year. So, and, and according to our water utility, we have far more than the $7 million in necessary water main replacements, that we could expend all of that money today if that was the decision. So, but the Township Council has, until I believe the end of 2026, to expend all of those funds, and we're going to try to use it, and they're going to try to make that, that decision, and we're gonna try to make those recommendations from staff to use it in the most beneficial way.
Okay, I just want to know that. And my other question is, I was in the youth center, the one thing I noticed is, there's no recycling cans in there, they seem to only recycle cardboard. Why are there no recyclable cans in that building? Those kids come in with bottles and cans, and they're just tossing them into the garbage. So I think you could use some recyclable cans in the building.
I'll make the recommendation.
Thank you.
Hi, Ann Bosenberg, 280 Bunker Hill Road, much smaller scale. Franklin Township currently has a fire pit ordinance, and I've been dealing the last four years with someone who burns every day, all the time, the prevailing winds throw the smoke into my yard, I've contacted the fire chief, the Somerset County Board of Health, and everybody tells me it's a town issue. And I went and researched, and there are other towns in New Jersey who actually do have smoke and odor ordinances in place, so at least if it crosses the property line, I have an option where I can call the police, or I can call the fire department and say, "Hey, I'm being smoked out." At this point, my only solution is I'm gonna have to take the neighbor to court, which I can't afford. So I'd like to see Franklin put something in place that other towns have done, that at least, you know, I can't open windows, I can't go in my backyard, you know, and it's very frustrating. So I'd just like to see something like that put in.
That's a good idea. Mr. Manager, can we discuss that in the next admin?
Yes.
I, I believe you all set my agenda, not me, so you asking my permission is kind
of redundant, I guess is maybe a good word for that, but sure.
I'm trying to be polite.
That's fair, and I'm too.
And you're working on me not being that.
I, I like to tend to take orders, that's in my nature.
Put it on the next agenda.
Hi, John Kavartek, 280 Bunker Hill. I just wanna back up Anne Marie and tell you how bad this smoke is. I mean, this fire pit is literally the length of this room, back door. So, for four years, and Anne Marie has asthma, I have a form of COPD, and I wanna spend the rest of my life not fighting somebody over smoke that, you know, I can't move the house. And the town and the state have laws against idling your engine on a car or a truck, so a car or a truck can't smoke out a neighborhood, but one fire pit can smoke out the whole neighborhood 24/7, 7 days a week. And right now, I mean, there's no, no limit to what you can burn, it can burn garbage, it can burn, they say, "Oh, technically you can't burn garbage."
No, you can't, no, that you can't.
But how can you stop, you can't stop that.
I know that a fire inspector went there based on the complaint-
Yeah.
That, and, and made an inspection of the property and found that it was firewood that was being burned, and that, that is not a violation of the state fire code.
Right.
And that's what I believe the discussion was with the fire inspector.
But it's green firewood, and they said-
I, I, believe me, I'm not saying it was good or bad, I'm just saying that's the, that's what the law says, the law doesn't differentiate between wet wood and dry wood, seasoned firewood versus, you know, it's just, it was not garbage.
Yeah, not at that time, but I appreciate you sending someone there.
Mm-hmm.
But green firewood smokes all the time, and it's-
I have a fireplace, I know.
Oh yeah, it doesn't burn well. People, they, they have a, a deal with the fire cutters, firewood cutters, these guys cut these trees down, they bring the wood in, they dump it off in a dump truck, and they just cut it up, and it's smoke green, it's got leaves on it, yeah, but regardless, I mean, you know, there's ordinances against pollution from cars, trucks, everything else, but here we're getting smoke right into the house, and we can't stop it.
Do you believe that's what they're doing, that they're, they're burning wood that they've, from their business?
Oh, well, no, it's not their business, it's somebody else-
They're getting firewood delivered, and it's not being seasoned, they're just burning it when they get it, it's fresh wood.
It's not their business, and even if it was, there's no way of proving it, but again, but it's a major problem, it's a distance from, of this room, and that smoke, when it comes out, and there's no way to escape it, it's horrible, it's, I mean, literally can't explain, I can't explain to you how bad it is, and, you know, again, this is four years that's been going on. Now, I don't wanna fight the rest of my life going to court and fighting back and forth, you know, who wants that, you know, but this person told us that we can't stop making, we can't move the fire pit. I asked the lady, "Can you move it someplace else?", and she said, "It's choking us out", and, "No, we can't do that." I said, and, and then she said, "Bring it on, bring it on", like, you know, tough guy, you know, like I'm gonna go, and I said, "Look, you know, you're really smoking us up, can you do something about it?" "No, they wouldn't do it, I'm saying to keep on burning."
Well, I won't promise you where it's gonna end up, but we will discuss it in-
Even if you limit it, because I know some homes have a lot of land in between, but we don't, I mean, we're right on top of each other, literally over there, you know, they're 30 feet away or something, you know, so, and that smoke, you can't avoid it, there's no way of keeping it from going into your house. So, you know, and I, you know, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna fight somebody the rest of my life over, over something that's silly like that, we can't move the house, if we could, we would've moved it, but, you know, you can stop fires, you know, and everybody's worried about, you know, air pollution, and you're banning plastic bags, 24/7, they can have an open fire, they got fires sometimes, I suspect, you can burn 24/7 in this, in this day and age, you know, what are we, we're not in the dark ages, I mean, you know, why are you doing that, for some kinda, you know, you know, thrill? I don't understand it. So, but anyway, you know, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Willie Goodes, I live in Fort Ford on Eastern Avenue. Let's have this resolution for these marijuana stations, and you said there's a limit of six, or that's-
No, what I said was, we would not anticipate getting any more than six, two of the three different types of licenses that are permitted to be issued by the state. The state of New Jersey has not indicated how many they're issuing to, to each individual town.
Okay, well, they seem to be concentrated in a certain area, a certain-
They're on Hamilton Street, Eastern Avenue, Route 27, and a couple scattered Cedar Grove Lane, and-
Yes, but in that area, you know, we have a middle school, we have a New Brunswick High School, and we have the Student Center, and we have Pine Grove School, and we have kids that's up and down those streets every day, every day during school season, and now that we have the Student Center, or the Youth Center, all during the summer, too. So I want councilmen, right, you know, I want you to do your due diligence, to see that our neighbor, our community is not impacted by these new centers that are supposed to be going up. We've been blindsided before in Franklin, you know, I love this community, I've been here for close to 50 years, you know, and I've been blindsided a few times in Franklin by sprawl and everything that's going on. Also, I asked this council to, you know, to do something that's impacting my neighborhood on, on the 5th Ward. I had people die right in front of my front door because of the traffic that's over there. I know I'm on a county road, I don't wanna hear that excuse, something needs to be done, there, there's a community that's got a CO of 800 to maybe 1,000 people that's entering an accident right across from Oakland Street, Avenue, and that's a deadly situation, you guys know, everybody here has been impacted by that street. So, you know, you're, you're connected with the freeholders, contact them, do something about that intersection, with all the people dying out in front door, my wife been traumatized, and I mean, this is less than about a month, you know what I mean, we constantly got cars turned upside down on our sidewall, you know, that's literally too much. And I can't move around like I used to, but you guys are in contact, you know, you work for us, do for us, please.
Are, are you aware of the million dollar grant that this county got from the federal government to do, and they're in the midst of right now? I, I don't know if you saw that in the newspaper. Somerset County received a federal grant from the Federal Department of Transportation to do a safety analysis and make recommend, for that to make recommendations for the entire stretch of Eastern Avenue from New Brunswick, the New Brunswick border to 287. So that, there is, that's ongoing right now.
Yes, I saw that.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what else I saw? There's a $200 facility that may be going up in the Kmart area, I saw that there in the newspaper also.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't follow.
A 200 unit of housing facility that may be going up in the Kmart.
So the, the-
So, 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 so we talk about sprawl, and you ever see that traffic in the morning and in the evening on Eastern Avenue?
Do you know the actions that the Township Council took in that particular matter?
No, I know, but like, like I said, I've been blindsided before, so I'm gonna bring it up now and make a public record.
The Township Council took specific action, and, and, and the applicant for that was told that it was contrary to the Township Council's right to zone to ask for a use variance for that particular property, and the, the applicant has withdrawn their application, and now has made an application to make a presentation on why there's the need for them to develop that in that manner to the planning board, but the Township Council did everything that they legally could to tell that applicant that because of certain actions that were taken by this council over the last few years regarding a change in the permitted uses in the general business zone, that applicant was told that it was contrary to the Township Council's right to zone, and so they've now at least temporarily withdrawn that application.
Okay, I heard this council mentioned something about the youth center. Understand, council, it took us over 50 years to get that youth center, and it wasn't built on your backs, you know. What was that?
Your time is up.
It took us over 50 years to get that youth center, so please don't use it as a backbone of what you do. Thank you.
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. Sorry if this is a little disjointed, I have a couple people's questions and some comments of my own. First of all, do you have a, an organizational chart of the way this township works? Because I know I'm confused, and I'm sure a lot of people are confused, and I think sometimes you guys even get a little confused, who's, you know, telling who to do what, when, and where, but does that exist?
Yes, it's in the township's ordinance.
It's in the actual organization, I don't have to read a bunch of-
Sorry, I can't read it to you, you'd have to read it, it's in the township ordinance.
But it's not a chart?
No, it's, it's, no. It's laid out in the township ordinance, the organization of the township.
Okay. Secondly, going back to that December 2020 meeting that Marlin referred to, I'm, I'm still shocked, I've watched it about four times, and I know there was, I see, is there a councilperson Pruitt still here?
He's not, she's not here today.
Okay, and also Will Gauthier, who is no longer.
He's no longer on council.
Yes, and the change from the M2, M1 to the B1, the two of them had specific questions, is this going to impact the senior communities? And Will specifically said, "Now it is my understanding that this will not impact, and these changes are just to repurpose and build upon existing warehouses." And he said, "Correct me if I'm wrong." And there was a dead silence. So, why was he not answered? And why, when Councilwoman Pruitt specifically asked questions if this was going to harm the local neighborhood's residents, she said, and she said, "Tell me if this statement is correct." "Yes, your statement is correct," but it wasn't correct. So, I don't know all the specifics of the change, but I do know that it is enabling larger buildings to be built close to us, and probably other people as well. Okay, so that is, I'm just shocked over that. Now, I'm going to ask a, some questions from one of my neighbors who happens to be an esteemed physician at Robert Wood Johnson. "Do you believe that diesel exhaust is a significant cause of early cardiovascular deaths?" These are three questions together. "Do you realize that elderly are at greatest risk for impacts of this pollutant? Has it been studied as to whether the warehouse being located so close to us will affect our mortality? Before you approve this, can you make that determination?" And he cites a study, a very current study, called "The Impact of Fine Particulate Matter 2.5 on the Cardiovascular System: A Review of the Invisible Killer." Now, yes, we're gonna see tractor trailers coming at us, and coming at the children, at the Elizabeth Avenue School, and wherever, but we're not gonna see the invisible killer. So, have you done a study, will you do studies, before you allow these large buildings, warehouses with the diesels near us? That's, I guess you can answer it, I don't know, was that a? Okay. Yes, okay, they want an answer. Have you done the studies, will you do the studies?
They're not part of the plan, if, if the question is, are they part of the planning board application, they're not. The planning board is considering zoning matters, that's what they're considering, and we don't have the authority as a municipality to conduct a study, determine that what we all know is true, which is the answer to those questions are all yes, and then prohibit people, prohibit the development of-
There is, there is a statement in the, there is a study as part of the application, I believe.
There's environmental impact stuff.
There's environmental, but I'm, we're talking about-
That takes that into account.
Correct. But we're all, we're talking about whether or not, as a result of that study, doing a study like that, we could then start to deny zoning applications, the answer is that is outside the authority of the municipality.
I'm, I'm just concerned also, not just the seniors, again, I said, the little elementary children, the high school football teams, and track, track stars, and everything else that goes on there, they are surrounded, they're outside for hours after school breathing this in. Thank you.
So, once again, I should probably keep my mouth shut, but I, as you know, I'm a physician. Of course, fumes from internal combustion engines can cause cancer, can cause COPD, can cause many things, as do all of the cars that you use today to drive here. We're not, as was just stated, we can't take that into specific account if the environmental impact study shows that there's no gross environmental impact from that. But it, it's not that we disagree with what exhaust can do, it's how will this, this installation, or this project, how it will change locally? That's the question, and they have an environmental impact study. Go ahead.
Linda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive. I'd just like to reference the first speaker who, who was talking about the environmental justice regulations, which unfortunately are not yet in effect in the state, and yes, Franklin is considered an underserved community, and the last speaker who was asking about sources of pollution, because I wanted to mention both the Competitive Power Venture, the CPV- mention both the competitive power venture, the CPV power plant, which you guys passed a resolution against, which is closer to the side of town than the proposed compressor station 206. And I, we recently found out, I don't know, and this is what I wanted to bring up, that the state just renewed their, their air permit for the compressor station 206 down on 27. So we're right in between those two proposed facilities, and those are extremely polluting and would be included in the environmental justice laws as very highly polluting. The, the, um, these don't pass the regulations, at least the compressor station 206, don't pass the regulations that the state passed on emissions in 2018. But because the original permit was, was granted prior to 2018, they just keep renewing it. So there's a lot of holes in the law, and they don't look at cumulative pollution of all these different facilities. And talk, and as far as I can tell, there's no regulation of small particulate matter 2.5. And there is a doctor who's spoken on this, who does research on, on disease and, and air pollution, who's, so if anyone wants to talk to me about it, I can reference his work. But not only does this type of pollutants cause cardiac disease, it causes diseases in almost every organ system there is. You know, kidney failure, and it also causes, you know, developmental diseases and everything else. And so these are the types of things we have to be aware of, and we have to be fighting things. We have to work together to fight this type of pollution and try to clean up our environment. And unfortunately, you know, even those who supposedly want to do good by passing these, these laws, whether federally or in the state, they, they're still looking at things piecemeal. So if they say, "Well, this particular structure won't pollute that much," and that particular structure won't pollute that much, well, together they will. So it's not just the trucks, it's not just the warehouses, it's the power stations at the compressor stations, and it's all, it's all these other fossil fuels. And one of the things that, you know, was on the agenda tonight is to try to get some of our electricity off of some of the fossil fuels and do it in a way that's less expensive to consumers or to consumers like me who maybe can't afford solar panels on their roof. So this is something that, you know, if you know people in other towns, you know, you have influence with, with other townships, or you can sign petitions as individuals. We have to work against these types of fossil fuel projects and not let these new fossil fuel projects, because this one's just down the road a piece on 27, and if you think that's not gonna be a problem, it will be.
Hi, Alex Strauss, 285 Hazlitt Way, Somerset. Back to warehouses. Um, okay. Planning board, I just went to the meeting last week, so that's September 7, 2022. I was also at the meeting August 3, the meeting previous, August 3, 2022. My conclusion is that Chairman Orsini should be removed. I'm tired of being cut off every second, okay? He lets the warehouse people go on and on and on. I am not off topic when I was talking, but he cuts me up. I mentioned 287. He says, "I can't allow that." Excuse me? You know, I'm not Perry Mason, I'm not Johnny Cochran or Camille Vasquez, but look, you know, he's being Judge Judy to us, okay? But the warehouse people, oh, they get, you know, just go on, please go on. It's just not fair. It's not right. Also, I want to say about the media, it was something in the media, almost it's like the people have to explain why they voted no on the variances. They shouldn't have to explain no, why they voted no. It's the people voted yes. And I say that because also because these variances were important. One of them was about impervious coverage, raising the amount of impervious coverage, which affects the environment, of course, and aesthetics. And the other one was about truck loading and driveways and, and backup room, okay? And they wanted to, where's this coming from? Is this the planning department that's working with developers to say, "Fine, you know, you can get a variance?" Because the planning board, you know, of course, now we have a situation where they're filing lawsuits, okay? Yes, because that's what happens when you take candy away from a child, because they've been given everything they want, pretty much, by Franklin Township. It's time to stop.
Hi, Jan Bryant, 22 Bryant Court. Thank you, everybody. Somebody was mentioning about the cannabis dispensaries and the licenses and whatnot, and I'm really glad to hear that there's a limit placed on those. But there's no limit placed on how many warehouses are able to be built in Franklin Township. On the docket right now, Mark Healy has on the docket, 2018 to present, I think there's 25 ready to be built. When I sent an email to you, Mayor, and others to ask how many warehouses were there before 2018, I was, it was written back, "There's no statistics of how many warehouses that you all built." I want to piggyback onto that woman who was saying it's a cumulative thing with these particulate matter 2.5. When they're doing these traffic impact studies, Mr. Vornlocker, and all these other studies, they're doing it on one warehouse. I know Toby was asking about the traffic. That's for one warehouse. But if we're talking, we have 25 warehouses on the docket from 2018 to now, and God only knows how many warehouses were before 2018. It's a cumulative effect, all these things that we're breathing in. And the other thing that I want to mention is, I'm really sorry to hear about the lawsuits that you all are witnessing right now, but you, you really fell into it when you had that meeting, December 8, 2020. I'm gonna go back to that meeting, I've spoken about it before, but you, you quickly passed it. Before then, there was no spec warehouses. There were specific warehouses for M1. If we were gonna have some building next door to us, right? We would know exactly what it was gonna be, but now we have no idea. Also, it would have been a lot smaller. So I know that you all say it's always been supposed to be that way, and the person bought their land and they deserve what to do, but you all sneakily approved something December 8, when thousands and thousands of people were diagnosed with COVID and dying of COVID all over New Jersey. You did that motion then, and you approved that, and you changed the M1 and M2 to business and industry when warehouses could only be, beforehand it was 500 feet away. You changed it so now it can now walk, it could be 200 feet away, 200 versus 500. You also changed how tall the building can be, and you also changed that it could be anything. We don't know what it's gonna be. It could be a cannabis dispensary, for all we know. That's, that's wrong. Also, I want to go back to Mayor, thank you for meeting with us about that Lot 60. You all know that that, that right over there, that court or Mettler's, it's not supposed to be warehouses. Now, we have a 600,000 warehouse, a 200,000 warehouse, a 100,000 square foot warehouse proposed to be built, but Lots 57, 58, and 59, all residents that I spoke to that were pushed out of their homes because Link Logistics was encouraging them to sell their homes because they were building big warehouses up there. And now they've come back, and now they want to build a big warehouse where those homes were. And now they're suing you. So really, it comes back to if you never did that ordinance, December 8, 2020, when you changed everything around so that you could bring Link Logistics in, and now they're suing you. So I want to say what comes around, goes around. It's unfortunate, and now we're paying the price of your mistakes, and you're paying the price getting sued by them. Lot 60 was never supposed to, and actually, so you were supposed to come back and tell us about that Lot 60. Lot 60, for people who don't know about it, where that's the long lot on Mettler's Road, it's supposedly split zoning. I did an Oprah request to get all the records to find out when this was split zoned. Nobody can find any records. You said you were gonna assign some people to it, and you're gonna find out about the split zoning. I'm not finished yet.
1997.
Okay, I'm gonna stop my timer. Okay, four minutes.
1997, I wanted to know.
Okay, you interrupted me, so I, I get my time. So he's saying 1997. However, there's no documentation. I hear that Mark Healy is working, your words, but we don't have a, we don't have a zoning report? We don't, isn't there something, when you split zone something, aren't they supposed to measure things out? Why aren't there any records for it? Nobody has come up with any records for it. Should I stop my timer? Do you want to interrupt me? Go ahead.
No, no, no. If you, you don't stop your timer. If you're asking a question, they will answer it during your time.
Well, it's kind of a little bit, when you're, you know, saying something and trying to motion to me, then I get off.
Well, the answer is, it was done in 1997 by ordinance, and it was, it was carried in, and it's been carried in the zoning ordinance since then. So I went back, I went back and looked at it, and all of the things that you're saying-
Hang on, you'll answer later.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Well, according, according to my watch, I have, I have 35.[1229.33][1229.35](LAUGHTER). And there was one interruption over there, but-
Ma'am, you were asking questions, and they answered them.
Okay, well, I didn't want, it was-
You now have 20 seconds. Please finish.
Okay, there's been no documentation, so it's, people keep telling us it's there. Actually, in the ordinance on the papers, if you look at the ordinance of all the lots that were changed, Lot 60 is not there. I'm sure you guys will dream up something. I saw after that planning meeting on, on Thursday, everybody, I, I actually took a picture. They were all together, and they were all happy. Vince Dominic was like looking at the attorney the whole time. I think during the video, he actually gave him a thumbs up at one point. So you really need to tell those guys that they have to be careful. And the people who voted no, right after the meeting, Michael Orsini called them over, and like you could tell he was reprimanding them for voting no. But they voted with the people because they want the best for the residents. It's not fair that they, that the residents have to-
Ma'am, you're well past your time.
Thank you. So go ahead, you can answer.[1298.52][1298.55](APPLAUSE).
So the answer, Mayor, is that it was originally created by ordinance number 2038, adopted October 14, 1997.
Wait, wait, let me write that down. 2038?
Correct, adopted October 14, 1997. And it was continued in the land use amendments in 1991, excuse me, 19, uh, August 1, 2003, which was when the overlay zone was done. So it's been in the ordinance that entire period of time. And I'm, once again, this is a, this is a circumstance where you are saying, "Well, in your opinion, you're not allowed to do this if you don't have a study that measures it out." But that's not the way it works, right? There are zoning maps that are adopted, and they are adopted. Because you've now decided 20 years later that there's a standard you want them to meet, it doesn't mean that the zoning ordinance doesn't exist.
Why wasn't it in the ordinance that came out, December 8? Why was that lot left off of it?
I don't know. So it is included in the zoning map? Well, no, I don't, no, you don't, I get to talk now.
Go for it.
So the zoning map is the official document-
You should sit down.
Right.
Thank you.
The official document is the zoning map, not a chart that's created for the benefit of those who are, are preparing the document. The IT department and the GIS department specifically created it. Clearly, there was an issue when it generated those lots within those zones because of the split zone aspect, and it was only looking for M1 zone, and because Lot 60 had a split, it didn't pick it up on the chart. But it has been included in the official zoning map, which is the legal document, not a chart that's created for the benefit of those who are working with the ordinance amendment, but the map. That's the official document, and it has been included on the map since the ordinance amendment of 1997. And that's documented through every ordinance, every master plan review and revision since 1997. So I, and, and I have all of that information. Mr. Healy has researched it all and provided it all to Mr. Raynon and me to show where. And now what I will also tell you is that split zoning is not an uncommon occurrence. There are other locations in other lots within Franklin Township that are split zoned, specifically in areas that where a use splits. For instance, along the frontage of Route 27, there are areas that are in the neighborhood business or office professional or general business zones, and the areas behind them, and there's a line drawn, and lots are split because the use behind that is not a general business use. It might be an agricultural use, it might be, in certain cases, it was formerly a, an M1 zone, and there are warehouses built behind office buildings and retail establishments on Route 27 in the Veronica Avenue-Bennett Lane area.
And, 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 and in fact, excuse, ma'am, excuse me. And in fact, our ordinance has a specific provision in it about-
It does.
Lots that are split.
And how they're handled.
What it says is that the portion of the lot that's in the, the zone, so let's say there's a portion of it that's in the, the business zone, you can only use that portion of the lot that's in the zone to meet, for instance, coverage requirements-
And it can't be used in any lot calculations.
So it, it's treated for that purpose as a, as a different zoning lot, even though it might not be a different tax lot. So, and by the way, this is not a Franklin occurrence. This is an occurrence in every municipality in the state. It's not unusual, especially with regards to large parcels. So, so, uh, the, the ordinance number, ma'am?
Yes.
Sure. It is ordinance 2038, adopted October 14, 1997.
And, and I'd just like to address some other things that you said, which are not factually correct. The M1 zone, when the merging of the M1, M2, and CB zones into the current BI zone was done, building height in the M1 zone was permitted to 50 feet, which has gone unchanged in the BI zone. 50 feet was the permitted height for a building prior to the merging of M1, M2, and BI in the M1 zone, which was what Lot 60 was previously zoned, M1. So a 50-foot building would have been permitted there prior to the merging of the, the three zones, and it's still permitted now in the BI zone. So that's not, there was no increase in height in the M1 zone. It's spec, it has nothing to do, and we're not gonna, you're done with your discussion, all right? And you know how to get ahold of me if you have questions. But the type of construction has no bearing on the permitted heights and setbacks and, and lot coverage and floor area ratio and all of those other things. It's not, it, it could be a manufacturing facility, it could be a warehouse, doesn't matter if it's a warehouse that has a known tenant, it's going to be occupied by the owner, or it's a spec building. The height limit is the height limit. The, the zoning ordinance has permitted 50-foot-high buildings in the M1 zone, and they currently permit it in the BI.
No, 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 you can't. So, ma'am, one, I respect you. I, I truly do. You put an enormous amount of time into this, you look at various things, you, you don't just say, "Oh, what about this, or what about that?" You, you look into it. I truly do respect you. And when I get pedantic about time and the amount of time you're allowed to speak, that's because I have to control the meeting. If I don't do that, then it gets out of control. And when I let someone speak a little bit longer than someone else, there are, a particular person who speaks, who spoke tonight gets on my case, "Why did you give them more than you didn't give me more?" So if I got a little agitated at you, I, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to keep order here, and I hope you understand that. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Jeff Summer. I live down the street, 58 Devonshire Drive, I've been there for 28 years. Hope to finish on a positive note here. First, I want to thank the mayor and all the council personnel and the employees of the township. You're coming out tonight, you come out every night or many nights, and you serve the township, and you're not always appreciated. And I think that, again, I wanted to extend my thanks with that. I was on my own homeowners' board, and I can realize the task, you know, thing. So the positive note, I want to applaud the township. I really think the paving job that was done on Demont is fantastic, and most specifically the curbing that was done, because I know, being a homeowner for the past 28 years, backing onto Demont, I know that some of that curbing, many times when it was repaved, was not done. So fantastic. And I also applaud you for doing the ADA compliance up here at the town center, because the town center, in my opinion, has only gotten better since I've lived in the town. So thank you very much to that. much to that. I want to ask a question, and one other thing I did want to say, my taxes did also go down, so, you know, good job with that. But what is the future with paving? Hopefully, that's an easy answer. And I know we're probably at the end of the season, but next year and beyond, and are we going to see these nice curbs on some of the other streets that give us curb appeal?
That's the, that's the hope. So, so this council in this year's budget, generally, we, we have budgeted, in a, in a, in a lean year, we budgeted $2 million for, out of municipal budget for paving, in addition to state aid that we received, that's usually about $250,000 to $300,000 annually. This past year, the council moved to $3.5 million. And, and I would anticipate that as the manager who prepares the budget, I will probably be making an ask of $3.5 million again for 2023. I'll give you a little foreshadowing there, Mr. Mayor. And, and that's because we brought in an outside vendor to do a full analysis of all the streets in the town. Ordinarily, the engineering department would go out and do evaluation, but in this case, we brought in outside. They actually, kind of like the Google car, videotaped every municipal road in town and sign, and also did a full evaluation of the pavement. And we found that we're probably slipping behind a little bit.
Yeah.
From where we would like to be. So to get caught up, we'll need to continue to budget that additional million over the normal two and a half million. And then continue to, in fact, Demont Lane was our state aid road for the year.
Okay.
All of that, not, almost all of it that we got from the state paid for. We had to use some municipal funds to finish the paving. But we'll also look to improve the, the ADA curb cuts at intersections when we, when we're paving those roads as well. So there's concrete work also included with the asphalt.
Yeah. No, it looks great. Keep up the good work.
Good to hear.
And thank you.
You actually stayed here for two hours for that?
Well, also, thank you for the civics lesson.
There you go.
And the patience that you're giving us, because you, I know from serving on the board, you know things that maybe some of us should do our homework and come better prepared for. So thank you. And I'm interested to see the rest of the agenda and where it goes.
My name's Terry Thorson. I live at 18 Lebede Drive, Somerset. This is also going to be pretty positive. I've got a suggestion. Whenever you use these screens, nobody in the audience can see them. Can't. Yeah? Why not move Ben and Martin and move the screens to the front so people will be able to see what's being projected? The only thing I was ever able to see here was when Mr. Healy had the new zoning. Anything that's just script is invisible to us. The only option is to put a big screen up in the front, get a projection machine and project it up to the front, or go to the schools and borrow Chromebooks for everybody who's sitting in the audience so that they can see what, what, especially at the planning board. When they start talking about and showing diagrams, we can't see them. Nobody can see them.
Right. And part of the issue, though, is that sometimes then the planning board can't see them if they're behind them. So we've weighed back and forth. What I want to do is add two more.
Your chairs move around.
Not take them away. No, I don't want to take them away. I don't want, I don't want to move them. I want to add two more.
Okay, that's even better.
That was the point I had.
That's even better, but that's going to be expensive.
I agree with you.
The other thing is about senior exercise. I have friends in Bridgewater, Branchburg, Hillsborough. By far, we have the best senior center in the area. We've got functional fitness. We have Pilates. We have Tai Chi's. We have Tai Chi. We have three different kinds of yoga. We're trying to get Zumba back. We've got, on Zoom, we have chair exercise for people. We really, in the central New Jersey area, have the best senior exercise programs when you look at any of the communities. Another thing, I want to put a plug in for September 29th, when the energy aggregation presentation is going to be at the library. I think it might start at 7:00. I know it ends at 9:00 because that's when the library closes. But if you want to find out about energy aggregation, that's a good place to go. I had a little, there was a little conflict about the community solar, because the first presentation I saw at the environmental committee meeting a couple of months ago, their representative said that their solar panels would be put on top of warehouses. I'm glad Teleport is going to be used. I had no idea why it was taken away from the metals in the first place, but it's got the most gorgeous carved woodwork inside. That building should be used.
Gorgeous building.
Gorgeous. Wonderful in there. You talk about people breathing particulate matter. Let me put a word in for the teachers. I taught here for 36 years. I had bus duty. I had outdoor duty. We were breathing that stuff in for 36 years. How long are the kids breathing it in? What's the biggest span we have? Maybe four years or five years out of school? That's all they breathed in. I was breathing it in for 36. And there were people who were in the school district much longer than I am. Okay? So that, think about the teachers for a while. We're breathing in all that stuff. Also, how much does a traffic light cost? A traffic light?
A four-way one is probably in the neighborhood of about $350,000, $400,000.
Because I have a feeling you're going to have to put one at the entrance of Canal Walk. And also, that will increase the idling, because trucks are going to have to stop there. Their trucks don't shut off the way mine do at a traffic light and then start again, so that I'm not idling. But trucks do. One other thing, how many of you were able to read the article from the Sierra Club magazine from fall 2022? Any of you? Oh, well, I join it. I belong to it. And I have the article here. And it's called Free Shipping Isn't Free. And they talk about the proliferation of warehouses. And then a diagram of, or the map of the United States, you can see New Jersey. We are by far the most overburdened in warehouses. And they actually even have a website where it says, to experience our multimedia investigation of the public health impacts of online retailing and same-day delivery, visit, and they've got the website to go and visit and see what investigation Sierra Club is doing. So if anybody from the council would like a copy of this, I can give you a copy. I ran them off enough for everybody.
We'll get them.
Do you like them?
Hi there. Good evening, council. I want to say thank you, Mayor Kramer. Thank you. Wow. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you, Mayor Kramer. Thank you, everybody, for being here. You guys, your job is super hard. Oh, my God. Total respect here. I am the owner of We Shop CBD, 657 Hamilton Street. Just wanted to come and kind of introduce myself, say hi to the community, say hi to everybody. Make sure they know exactly what we're about. We're really based about, about community, about educating, about CBD products. If people are interested in learning about what cannabis can do or CBD can do to help them and kind of help them not be so anxious and stressed out, please come see us. If you guys have any questions on it, please come see us. We want to educate people and help them understand. We want to educate you guys and do our best. I'm personally, on my end, I'm a medical patient. I wasn't in this town. I was doing this job at a mall, and I got closed down. And when I saw Franklin Township open up their doors to educate people on cannabis, I wanted to come here to make an impact in my community, because I grew up around here. Okay? The people that work in my store are from our town. People that are in our location are NJ certified. Where I was, but tender certified in 2019, before any of this even happened. I've been studying this since 2004. I've been selling cannabis since I was 10. Okay? So I know what I'm talking about. And I just want to make sure we say hi to the community.
Everything you say can and will be used against you.
Yes, well, and I just want to be as honest as I can about what we're trying to do and what we're, how we're trying to help people. Because there are a lot of people, especially our older community, that can use these products. And I want to do, for my grandmother and the people that I grew up with, the best job that I can to help them and ease them. And that's why I created We Shop, because I was a medical patient. I didn't have anyone to talk to or no one to come to. So I educated myself so people can come and talk to us. So if you have any questions, 657 Hamilton Street. If you have any concerns, any worries, please come talk to us. We'd love to kind of teach you, because that's what we're trying to do. Okay? So, and thank you, guys, for the time, and God bless you.
My name is Ernst Peter Wandelisch, partner. I live a long time. I went to university.
Speak into the mic.
It was the principal purpose for me to come here to get an MBA.
Speak into the mic, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
And, so, okay, so the worst you've hidden here, then. And I lived in the most, one of the most beautiful towns in America, Warren Township. And then, when we felt we don't need a big house and a big property anymore, we looked around and we felt Canal Walk looks like where I'm coming from, from Warren. Same image. And I think, in life and in business, the image has to fit. And a warehouse across an adult community, it's like an white elephant. No matter what you say there, and holds and this and that, it's a, it will always be a white elephant. And what I don't understand, I heard from people since, there was planned a nursing home, and you turned, allegedly, you turned it down. Why?
That's actually absolutely not true.
No.
Absolutely not.
The developer asked me what people told me.
Well, I can tell you that I met personally with the developer of Canal Walk, who was the prior owner of that parcel.
Yes.
And we met and discussed at length on multiple occasions, the construction of congregant care-type facilities and assisted living. And that was the direction that Mr. Hiller and Premier Development was going for the property until COVID hit. And Mr. Hiller came to us and said, I'm no longer interested in building that type of facility, and therefore, I'm going to have it developed as of right, which is a warehouse. So that's the truth. Meeting took place in my conference room.
Okay, that's, but now COVID is over.
That's what he wanted to do.
And nursing homes are needed.
And we'd love him to build one there.
I have a decision for us. He doesn't own the property anymore.
I hope I never have to move into one. But I cannot understand, being from Europe, you know, I, and lived a long time in Paris, in France. People would never build something like, combine something like that. It, it doesn't fit the image. And that's what I don't understand. I, where I go to Summit Medical, I keep my health, I said, they're always looking for places to open up new facilities. So if you'd like to have a, they gave me a phone number. Would you like to take the car?
It's not for us to develop. We don't own the property, sir.
Okay. So where, where, where could we go?
The developer is the developer, and the owner is the owner. We have nothing to do with that part of it.
Oh, you're talking about the one who is from Chicago?
I'm talking about whoever owns the property is the one who's submitted the application to the planning board for the warehouse development across, on Metlers and Schoolhouse, B9 Schoolhouse LLC, whoever those owners are.
Well, it might not have a sale here. So somebody else then, he then will sell this property, so we don't have to wait for a new property owner. You don't try to build an image in your town, what comes in. I see at least three warehouses empty, and I just heard Amazon has closed warehouses. So why would I allow to get more warehouses being built here in this area? That's all what I have to say.
Thank you. What is your address, sir? What is your address?
Your address?
My address?
We never get.
That's your Warren address?
In the Fairfax.
What, what is your address in Canal Walk?
Um, where's my address?
What's the Fairfax?
Metlere. Minute Middle Lane. We're traveling a lot, so it's just a roof on the.
Hi, I'm Beverly Rabinevitz, 67 Bayard Road. I could flick a ping pong ball and I'll be able to hit the warehouse unless you move it. But I'm here to talk about, when we talked about Randolph, and I'm happy to tell you that since that meeting, and since you put up more signs, and since you put up that electric sign, and since people went into the stores, not once have I seen, and I'm on that road almost three times a day, a stopped or idling truck on Randolph. So that has been well done. And I love when you turn up with that big lit sign doing that. Also, at that meeting, the mother of that young girl whose car went into the canal was the same night. And the next night, and I waited till dark, I, because I'm near Jock too, you know, my kid, my son lives right nearby. I took that road and went very, very slow because I was scared where it happened. And sure enough, it was dark and there was no fence. And the next time I went back, there were lots, I think there were nine orange cones reflecting it. And when I back, went back a few days later, happy to say there was a metal fence up. So thank you, because I remember you saying, we're not going to wait. We have to take care of that in front of us. So I thank you for that.
Because that steel by rail was not approved by the DNR.
I know. I noticed it was different, but I didn't go into the.
So just so you know, township manager took it upon himself to get that metal guardrail placed right after.
I just thought you needed a little praise and pat on the back.
And I appreciate that, and just.
But that's hard for me to do, because I can flick a ping pong ball.
To ask Mr. Bowman not to put it in the Franklin reporter advocate tomorrow.
The other, the other part of traffic, major problem, is on, on, by CVS, and there's the Dunkin' Donuts. And I still can't understand how the drive-in for Dunkin' Donuts, and, and they order from their car, if you're there at the wrong time, there's cars in the street waiting to go in. You cannot go into the Dollar Store, which I'm a 9 o'clock fan of Dollar Store. Can't go in. But you should take a look at that.
You should go in off Elizabeth Avenue, and then you can go in very easily. I know, because I do it almost every day.
Okay. The other issue, though, is I've, it's about four times now, a truck has been stopped on CVS side of the road to go over to Dunkin' Donuts, I assume. Yes, because I still am carrying coffee.
And they should not do that. And I've seen that happen too. And that's, and, and I've notified the police department, and the police department has increased enforcement in that area. In fact, I was on vacation last, week before last, now I can't even remember, for four days, so leading up the Labor Day weekend. And while I was on vacation, I had a discussion with the public safety director about that again, because she now has taken it upon herself to visit that on a frequent basis as well, when she's on her way to Randolph Road to make sure there's no trucks parked on the side of the road.
But that's a really scary situation with people coming out.
They should not park there because it narrows the road too much, and that, they run in because they can't pull in. School buses used to do it, too. Then school buses started to use the side street across the street instead.
But just the entrance into Dunkin' Donuts, if somebody's coming out and somebody's trying to go in, I've seen cars just stop and back up. Something's really wrong with that, that entranceway that I think you need to look at.
It's a too-popular store.
Yeah, coffee.
Gets too much because.
Okay. And what was the date of, feed me that information, the meeting of?
December 3.
Is that what you wanted? You needed a date?
Excuse me, you have to address the.
Okay. I'm sorry. They wanted a date of the meeting, and I, I don't remember what it was. So that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Johnston at 34 Norwich Place. I want to thank the previous speaker for bringing out the important point, that although you say you don't have control over what the planning board does, you do vote them into office, okay? And all the current members of the planning board, you all voted them or you appointed them into, into their offices now. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the terms of some of those planning board members are going to be expiring at the end of this year. So I would, I would encourage you to start looking for replacements for some of them, especially the ones who have been consistently showing favoritism toward the developers. I would like to thank the councilmen and the, and those two planning board members who voted no to the warehouse at the last planning board meeting. That took courage for you to do that. I admire you. You stood by your convictions. And, and do not let anybody, whether it's the chairman of the planning board, try to coerce you into voting the way he wants you to vote. Don't let anybody pressure you. You, you vote according to your convictions and your principles. And, and, yeah, because, because like someone said, that we've seen, we've seen evidence where the chairman was trying to do that. Let me give you a. Let me give you an example. Remember, remember several months ago, when they, when there was, we had that four-story residential building at the former Kmart site, we had all these discussions, and the majority of the people were opposed to it, but Michael, Michael Orsini was participating in our discussions, and he insulted us. He, he said, all of you people who are against it, you're all anti-people. He actually posted that on Facebook. He, yeah, so he has a history of, of showing favoritism toward these developers. Okay? Now, now also, I want to talk about just one more thing. You know, we've been talking about the B9 Schoolhouse Warehouse, you know, that's going to be on, on what is now undeveloped land, where there's a lake, and, you know, and, and, and so on. But, but, but last week, we found out that there's going to be another application coming in for, for 163 Western Road, near the intersection with Metlers, which is going to be a 600,000 square foot warehouse, which will be twice the size of the B9 Schoolhouse Warehouse. Can you imagine what it's going to be like? The whole length of Metlers Road is now going to be lined up with warehouses, from, from the beginning to the end, and, and all that undeveloped land, that, well, 163 Western Road is right now undeveloped land. I think it's a horse farm or something, okay? That's all going to be destroyed, everything, and replaced with these, these big warehouses, 40 feet high with no windows. I mean, I, I, I can't even imagine it. So, okay, so I think that's what I wanted to say. Okay, because, and, and they, they say that the application for that 163 Western Road Warehouse came in, came in just before the ordinance went into effect, so, so I don't know. So, okay, so, okay, well, so I think that's it, so, so thank, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, seeing no one else looking to come forward to speak, I'll motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed. We are now on to council comments and reports. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I need to set straight, because I don't want people walking around thinking one thing, and it's, it's actually something different. I want to correct the record. One, I didn't want marijuana sales in the neighborhood. I represent the fourth ward. Didn't want on Hamilton Street. Why? The hills are on Hamilton Street. Now, you have two liquor stores in walking distance. You get down and start walking, boom, you hit one liquor store, which is a block in from Franklin Boulevard, all the way down to the other end, right before Mimi's Mall. So you're going to hit two liquor stores, and there's a proposed installation on one, I think it's on Hamilton Street, somewhere in that neighborhood. Well, I didn't like it then, I don't like it now, because our township manager just said, it's in a retail zone. Can't stop it. It's a permitted use. So, yeah, that was looked at a long time ago. Number two, you mentioned something about wanting to stop the voting on two consent agenda items until it's been properly vetted. And I might be wrong, and if I'm wrong, I think the township manager will clean me up on this, this has been an ongoing process. It didn't pop up last night.
No, it's, it's been ongoing for, I guess now, since the legislature legalized the sale and cultivation of cannabis. And, and you have had multiple public hearings here, and, at the council level, on the ordinances that were passed by this body to allow for the three different types of businesses, and this is certainly not the first time resolutions have been on our agenda, to do just what these resolutions will do, and that is to basically tell the state that the applicants are in compliance with our zoning ordinances. Been done before on more than one occasion.
So there you have it from our township manager. We've done this before, if you were not here, just like the residents are in front of us, if you don't stay informed, you will definitely miss something. And we have been discussing this, so let's not make it like it's brand new. Also, different classifications. Now, we didn't set this up. The state did. And I actually found out women are actually a minority. And I said to myself, well, wait a minute, how's that happening? No, classification, women are a minority. And yep, I'm a minority too. But now, so with that in mind, my township manager or our legal counsel will explain, if you can, what was actually said, what was actually put in that law about classification of who was the minority and who wasn't, and how that whole process got together. So I'll just leave it up to whoever wants to do it.
I'm not sure that I can, so I don't.
Well, what did the law say about minorities, as to who is their, no, let me rephrase that. Minorities, how does that operate? How does the classification in the state rules and regulations of who they push for to get a license, and how does that impact here in Franklin Township?
Once again, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I can.
Maybe I'm rephrasing that wrong or something?
Yeah, I, no, I don't, I think.
I think you're asking a very broad question. I think that at the time that they adopted, so.
So the legis, the legislation, I believe, calls for consideration to be given to minority-owned businesses who are making proposals for licenses, who meet all of the criteria necessary to be granted a license. Among them are women-owned businesses and, and minority-owned businesses. And so if, if in fact, applicants here in Franklin Township meet that criteria for considerate, for, I would call it special consideration to be given to them in the granting of a license, then that would put them in a better position to be granted a license. I know that there are a number of applicants, not all, but there are a number of applicants for the various types of business, cannabis businesses here in Franklin, who fit that criteria to be considered a minority or a woman-owned business.
And, and just, just so we know that, and I just pulled up the regulations in front of me, the, at the time that they adopted the cannabis law, there was a tracks, right? There was a social justice track, and there was the.
Your, your mic.
Oh, sorry. So actually, the preferences that the cannabis regulatory commissioners giving include individuals who have prior criminal convictions for possession of small amounts of marijuana, that is, that's at the top of the list, and then it's persons of colors, color, and disabled veterans. So those, those are actually the, the categories that are getting the preference from the state. And once again, we don't issue the licenses here, right? All we do is we certify that you, you conform or you don't conform with our zoning ordinance. So, and by the way, and we, we get to impose a tax, and Franklin is one of 40 communities that gets a, there's a special pot of money that's generated from all of the cannabis sales in the state that are distributed to impacted communities, and that's the social justice part of it, impacted by things that happened in the past, and there's an additional tax revenue that comes.
Okay, so we're in a good position, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to clean up some misconceptions out there, because if we don't do it right then and here and now, you'll walk out that door with a perception of, oh, this is what it's all about. So my clarification on these rules and some of the stuff going on, I felt that it needed to be done. Now, on to something, and I'm done. You see these beautiful posters behind me, one is in Spanish, and one is in English, and the reason why I brought them up is because, on September the 22nd, at 7:00 PM, in this room, door is open at 6:30, Corvella Director, Corvella and Mayweather, Public Safety Director here in Franklin Township, and Darren J. Russo, County Sheriff, Somerset County, they will be here to answer your questions, concerns, and input on how to make Franklin Township safe for all in the community, and the community is us. We're the community. So I would invite you to come, because if you don't come and ask a question, then you can't talk about nobody, because you could have asked your question. If you wanted to know something, you need to come down and find out about it. So when the residents come up and ask me, well, Carl, why aren't the police here? Why did I see a whole bunch of police over there? Why do I see a police officer sitting in the gas station burning up his engine? Why do I see him in the, on Hamilton Street, in the community, community center building, which is where the police hang out? You heard the word hang out. The engines are burning, Carl, why are they over there and not chasing the criminals over here? That's a good question, isn't it? So come down, and you'll learn the answer to all those questions. You hear about people leaving their car, car doors unlocked, the stuff like that? How to keep them safe. Blue Angel Program, got to learn about that to keep our elderly safe. So those are some of the issues that'll pop up. We want you to come down, you'll learn about them, and that, Mr. Mayor, I believe is the, because time is short, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. Nice suit, Councilman. Councilwoman Oden.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. All right, so the thing I'm going to focus on my update, the most on, is, I know we all talked about warehouses, and I invited to Somerset around adult community very recently, where they hosted a very similar session to what Canal Walk did a couple weeks ago, and the entire agenda was around just educating people on the new ordinance, what's happening, the zoning, just an overview, educational awareness session, and it lasted about three hours. We had over 100 people that joined, residents that joined that session. So what's, what I felt was exciting, interesting to me, is that I'm excited that residents are learning more about what's happening in town, and engaging with us, and telling us their concerns and issues, because it's helping me understand the feedback that's coming out from everyone, and then how we can work and partner with you guys. So that's the main item that I want to discuss, and I think there are other things that I've done, which, you know, there were grand openings that occurred in Franklin, so I'm a big promoter of these local businesses that's growing. I always say that if you, you know, need to go out there, support local business, because they need us. So I always try to promote them. Apart from them, I attended a couple other events, which I know Councilman Rahm might bring up on his update, but that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
You, Councilwoman, Councilman James Bassinella.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, prior to the council meeting, we had our yearly 9/11 tribute, and some of us council members were there, myself, the manager, mayor, and a few others. Last year was the 20th, so there was a lot more acknowledgement and awareness in general, obviously something that time's not going to heal, but hopefully bring peace to more people affected by it in some manner. But because of that meeting, because of the meeting, because of the ceremony we had there earlier this evening, we did not have a public works meeting, which we have every month, Tuesday, which I and three other members or council members are member of. I was glad to hear the manager hint that he's going to be asking for a similar amount in our next year's roadway paving. But we'll be having that public works meeting next week, but most of the projects are intact and moving along. I look forward to next year. Keeping the momentum, I know it was mentioned earlier in some of the conversation about our COVID money, or money from federal government. Hopefully, we'll get some, but we also have to plan here. A lot of what, obviously, people are here for tonight is about what's above the ground, and I truly respect that. I'm always conscious of quality of life issues, but there's a lot of work that goes on about what's below the ground also in this town, and we're going to keep diligent in making sure we stay up to speed. The one thing I wanted to mention, or maybe get some clarification, without going too deeply into it, towns were given time, time to decide how they wanted to go about allowing or not allowing various cannabis licenses. We opted, obviously, to after, to allow it after a lot of work and conversation and debate about it. The thing that I think is still a question mark for me, and perhaps could be better explained, and I know I talked to the mayor earlier in the week about it, or over the weekend, there's not an exact number, maybe the attorney can give some guidance, if there is any guidelines in numerical fashion, that actually tell us, tell these towns that are allowing licenses, or anybody in the state, how many licenses they're, they're actually going to give. So when you see 30, 40 pop up, that we're saying we, I don't even know what the right word would say, support, which is a weird thing that the state government put on us as the list of requirements somehow in hindsight, I'm hoping they'll reconsider that. But we're acknowledging, like was explained, that they've done all the work, they've submitted all the documents, it's all in a legal place, et cetera, et cetera.
Actually, Councilman, that's not what we're certifying.
Okay, what are we exactly?
What we're certifying is that where they're proposing to run their business is a permitted location in the township. That's it.
The location. Well, that's the last thing I said was, and that it's.
Yes, but we're not vetting them, and we're not, they're not applying to us.
I'm agreeing, that's actually the point I'm trying to make, that we're acknowledging that what they're applying is legal by way of how we put our ordinance, and that what the state is allowing a certain amount of licenses. I think the confusion comes, I mean, there was even one, one address that had two or three supposed businesses that want to go there. I don't know, most strip malls don't allow two or three pizzerias, so I just don't want people to think because, and I always mentioned earlier, but because you have dozens of places we're saying are within the bounds geographically, or whatever way they need to be for us to vote for that resolution, that that's how many licenses. My question, a little bit of a concern, is that nobody knows, or if we do, maybe we can get some info now, how many licenses the state will actually allow, because you only have a few dozen towns that are allowing it out of hundreds. So does that mean they're all going to go to? What we do have is a time period, and Mr. Raynong can, can speak to this better than me, but the time that we approved the ordinance, I believe the clock started ticking, that it was five years, that we have three or five years that we can go back and amend or change some of the requirements or allowances, when you see how that process starts to build out, if indeed it does start to build out in your town. But when we accepted and went all in, as some people have referred to, isn't there a time period of which we have to allow, but then can go back to the drawing board and change the regulations or what we want or don't want?
No, you can, you can change the regulations. What you can't do is outright ban, if you were going to ban them from your town, you had to that by, I guess.
So.
So if you didn't do that, then you had to have, then you had, you had to have an ordinance, and you didn't even have to have an ordinance in place, but you, the proper procedure was to put an ordinance.
Right.
But if you were going to ban them completely, you had to pass, you, you had to do that before, I guess it was six months after the law was.
So just not knowing what the state's going to actually do with the amount of licenses they're going to issue. We would be allowed to go back in the next few years and limit the amount of.
The number of licenses.
The number of licenses, if we felt that, that too many would be. In other words, we don't know what the state's going to do. We have guidelines and a lot of commentary, but not actual numbers. So if we see, because I, quite frankly, don't think they. So if we see, because I quite frankly don't think they know exactly. They're kind of feeling it out. This is a major thing. I mean, this is almost like coming out of prohibition in a certain way. But my point is, and, and I don't know, so I'm really asking, make sure I'm clear here, that if we see that there's more than we want or in certain areas we don't want, or anything to do, like with the hours or anything, we do have some control over going in and modifying based on what we believe is in best interest of the quality of life in our town. So we're kind of going along with the flow now because we said, after much review, that we want to allow it. But it doesn't mean that we have no control or are just going to sit by and let anything happen. I'm sure we'll be monitoring, as the residents will also, and the media and everyone else. So just for some clarity there, it's a little unknown area here. And that part that's on the agenda tonight is just part of really a new process and probably one that is probably pretty good. But I doubt anybody in Trenton will suggest it's perfect. So hopefully, it will get better and better as this process plays out, which I think is kind of happening in real time now since the licenses are forthcoming very soon. So just wanted to throw that out there. Maybe that lends a little clarity. But we'll be monitoring it, as I'm sure you will be. And I think enough was said about the warehouse situation, at least as far as what we can say and needs to be said tonight. But I'm sure I speak for everyone when I say this. We are listening. And even if some line of information is the same over and over again, I'm listening because occasionally I hear some new and interesting points. So we hear you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Can't talk with the mask on, I'm sorry. So I want to tell everybody that your quality of life concerns are not falling on deaf ears. We hear you loud and clear. We're concerned about the issues that you're facing. And we are doing everything we can to remediate that. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate your time. The other thing I wanted to say is that everybody knows I'm a big thing with the youth. And I attended a parent engagement meeting on August 30th. We got a lot of good feedback from the parents about the youth center. They told us about how it would be nice to be able to receive donations. They wanted to have talent shows. They talked about having programs for self-care and self-awareness and workshops and things like that, and how to get out the word to more parents. And so that was a really good meeting, and we're having them every month. The other thing I wanted to say is that we're making some staff changes over at the youth center. We're going to have some staff augmentations over there. And I'm hoping that at some point, we'll have better engagement. Oh, really? Okay. Well, anyway, so I'm hoping that, you know, we'll see a lot more engagement over there based on some of the things that we're planning to do in terms of programs that we're going to put into place. Okay. And also, also, we, as a result, we have some, some. All right. Well, whatever. Okay. I didn't say anything specific. Okay. And also, we're going to have a fun day on Friday. And we're going to have a movie night on September 30th. We also are planning to have a Halloween party in addition to the trunk and treat.
What's the movie?
What's that?
What's the movie?
Oh, the movie. What's the movie? I don't know, but it's going to be a good one. We're also, we're, no, it's going to be, whatever the kids ask for is what we're going to have. Okay? And then we're going to have a girls volleyball camp, entrepreneurial program, boys' council, girls' circle, yoga, social emotional learning. We have divas and gents. So school started back up, and we're planning to see a lot of kids over at the youth center. So I'm excited. And there will be changes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sometimes it's tough to be a councilperson. Councilman Emberson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me try to be brief because I'm looking at the clock. Anyway, I think the last council meeting, we discussed about some of the safety issues, especially the Jacks Lane Canal Road intersection, where we had the guardrail issue. I believe township manager took it upon himself and came up with some creative ways, made a couple of calls. And on September, August 24th, that guardrail was repaired with metal guardrails, which we think is better than the other one that was there. But anyway, it is done and done nicely.
It's better because we could get it.
Yes. So the county helped us out. So it's good to have connections with the county engineering department, which our township manager has very good contacts there. So thanks to the county for coming through on that. So we have a, we have repaired that area and it is safe. An option of that is that I have asked the township manager, we will discuss this in our public works committee meeting in a week or so, in a week, that we want to identify, you know, some more intersections or dangerous crossings in town. I think I've heard a couple here in today's meetings. I note down those names. So we want to continue to address this throughout the town with whatever that we can do, you know, to improve the signage or put in solar powered blinking stop signs, better reflectors, more stop signs, no left turns. Whatever we need to do, we are going to pay more attention to that. So we want to prevent before something serious accidents happen in town. So that is, that you have our word on that. We will continue to work towards traffic safety in town. Other than that, I think I happen to be on the planning board as a member. And.
Careful.
So I think you have, I've heard a lot of comments. And it is a tough position. And we are doing the best we can within the limits of what the law permits. So you have to appreciate all the board members that are all volunteering their time. And they are trying to do a good job for the township. And again, within the guidelines that have been established for us. Other than that, I think we have a HRC meeting coming up on the 28th. The police director is going to be the guest speaker. And that would be a good one. And I think you heard Councilman Wright speak about the town hall that he is going to have for the public safety. So please do attend that. On a, another note, on the celebratory note, on October 22nd, next month, we would be organizing a Diwali celebration in town. As you know, Diwali is a huge event for Asian Indians. And it's a festival of lights. Light over darkness is the concept. So we will have that this year. Last year, we did it in the gazebo. We were all freezing to death. So this year, we are going to do it indoors. That's all I've got, Mayor.
So you're not going to take a bow about Tulipwood? Tulipwood was mentioned here.
Well, yes, okay. So Tulipwood.
Hang on, hang on. If, if anyone has been to it, it is gorgeous inside. It is just amazing inside. And it's sitting there rotting away until Councilman Emberson came along.
Okay. Yeah. So my background, the last 15 years before I retired, was in higher education and community colleges specifically. So one of my big things is to educate our youth that don't have the opportunity to get a college education or any career training, workforce training. So we want to convert that three acre land on Tulipwood to, to a college campus. So we worked with the college president, RVCC president, as well as the county folks, the commissioners, and the county administrator. They are going to invest over $5 million in our town. And we are going to use some of our ARP money that the manager talked about, about a million, take up of the 7 million. And we donate that land to the college so that we can have a RVCC satellite campus right in town. We used to have one at the corner of Franklin Boulevard and Hamilton many years ago. That went away. But we want to increase the opportunity, educational and workforce training opportunities for our unemployed youth, uneducated youth. We want to bring more higher education opportunities in town. So that's one of my passions. So we are working on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Have the privilege of attending a Somerset Run meeting last week. But the meeting lasted up to three hours. And the main issue that was discussed on that meeting was the warehouse. And the Franklin Township officials, they were there and they were able to explain everything to the members of the meeting. And all of us were on the same plane. The meeting lasted long and we all agreed that we were on the same plane before we left. So something happened here today, which just showed that all of us are on the same plane. We still continue to look for a better solution to this problem. The second thing is that the meeting gave me the privilege to meet some members of my new ward. You know, my ward was redistricted and some members of them were in that meeting. So I had the privilege to meet them and introduce myself. And they introduced themselves to me, too. It was a good meeting and I really enjoyed the meeting. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. So for my comments, I'm actually going to refer to manager. Speak about the scenic corridor.
You would like me to discuss the scenic corridor?
Yes, please.
You're going to leave me to my own devices?
Right. It'll come back to me after that.
Ow! So I think that what the mayor is referring to is that there's been a number of people tonight and in previous meetings that referenced the fact that Metlers Road is in fact, as a part of our scenic corridor ordinance, and it in fact is. And the scenic corridor ordinance puts certain requirements as well as suggestions, both, on applicants that apply for development within the, within the corridor. And we have said on a number of occasions, both in private meetings and public meetings, that staff has the responsibility to review these applications. And depending on what staff member we're talking about, would apply either part of the zoning ordinance or in the case of Mr. Healy, the township planner, he in fact applies every aspect of the ordinance in his report on each application that goes in front of the planning board or zoning board. So Mr. Healy has completed his report and as has other staff, yes.
He does this methodically at its own time.
Absolutely.
Not when it becomes controversial, but he goes, he treats every application the same way.
This is done for every application that goes in front of the planning board or zoning board of adjustment. And Mr. Healy completed his, his review, as did the rest of staff, fire prevention, police department, health department, and engineer. As I, and I referenced earlier in a, in an answer to one of the residents that I had in fact reviewed the engineer's report today. In fact, I reviewed all of the reports and read Mr. Healy's report several times just so I had a full understanding of it. And I also had meetings with Mr. Healy on Thursday and Friday of last week as I knew he was working through his review of the application for the planner's report. The scenic corridor has some, some very specific language that limits certain aspects of development. And because the scenic corridor ordinance extends from the center line of a road 1,000 feet in, so the entire parcel that is B9 Schoolhouse is included within the scenic corridor ordinance requirements and recommendations. The most, I guess, probably the most relevant to the discussions that have been had in private and in public, you know, in meetings with residents and attorneys, is that the setback requirement is double what it is in the BI zone. It's double what it is in whatever zone that particular parcel in the scenic corridor ordinance is. So, and, but it, what it, it also includes that is not ordinarily included, and this is not just a building setback. This is a structure setback. So what that means is that all of the stormwater structures and parking lots are included in that setback. So the 100-foot setback is not the building. It's the building and all of the structures. The original proposal by the applicant was to include the parking lot and stormwater management structures in, in between the building and Metlers Road. Everything needs to be shifted on this particular plan 100 feet in. So the building itself, if they, and this will mean that basically the developer will have, and their engineer will have to reconfigure and redesign the plan to conform or ask for a variance, which is unlikely in this particular case that they will do that. We believe that they will, they will redesign the, the, the building and, and, and its associated structures. So that, that report and the other reports have been provided to the applicant's attorney this morning. And so, and if you would like to review Mr. Healy's report, you certainly are able to do that by visiting the zoning department and reading his report. Like I said, it's a public record once it's been provided to the applicant, so. So that's my report on scenic corridors, Mr. Mayor.
So now, triggering off of what Councilwoman Francois said, listening to you, we understand you. You're doing things that we can't always tell you about. But this would have happened regardless.
Yes.
This is just the methodical way that we need to do things. We can't jump ahead. Sometimes that's frustrating to you. It's often frustrating to me. But as a doctor and a former Air Force pilot, I have learned if you don't follow the procedures, that's a great way to make a mistake. So they're following the procedures.
And, and one thing I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor, to that is that it's important to differentiate between a completeness review and a plan review. Because they are two very, very different, distinctly different things. A completeness review is simply saying, okay, they've provided 25 copies of the plan, check. They've complied with the application to Somerset Union Soil Conservation, check. They've submitted their, so it's just a checklist. And it is literally, if they have to submit X amount of a certain thing, X amount are there. And that's the completeness review. The staff review and the planning review of the application itself for conformance to whether it's conformance to our zoning ordinance, it's conformance to our engineering standards, it's conformance to generally accepted engineering practices, it's conformance to our stormwater ordinance. All of those reviews are very detailed and, and take time. And that's why an application deemed complete doesn't get an, a, an appointment in front of the planning board or zoning board in a week. There's a process. And that process can take months and months and months. Because now that one review has been done, there will be a second review. And oftentimes, there's a third review and a fourth review and a fifth review. I think that I did eight separate reviews on the first phase of Canal Walk when I did planning board review. So it, it is a long process. Okay? Is that good for the mayor's report? Because I have a report after.
No, I haven't quite finished yet. There's a couple of corrections I want to make. One, it's repeated over and over again that we are building this, we are building not, that, we are building nothing. We are administrating ordinances around the buildings, but we are not building them. Oh, the, there's been talk of the, a warehouse that is going to be along Metlers Road. There's an application, as has been brought out tonight, of a warehouse along Metlers Road just south of the B9 area. That's a completely different animal. B9 is, as we refer to, as of right. In other words, they're, they're permit, it's a permitted use for a warehouse there. Even before we made the change in the regulations and the zoning, the one that's south of B9 is not as of right, it's zoned ROL and RR3. That will go before the zoning board. That's not as easy as something going before the planning board. So that's a different animal. The other thing is somebody, somebody accused the zoning board of being part, they accused the council of being part of the problem, part of the problem, and the planning board of being part of the problem. Council has the ability to zone, planning board gets involved in zoning, and planning board hears certain applications. The zoning board, until it hears the application that I just said, is not part of this. The zoning board does not do zoning. They're more correctly called the Board of Adjustment. They're, when someone is trying to build something contrary to the zoning, they will give permission or not give permission to build that. So unless, and I haven't followed every warehouse application, but unless it's gone before them, they're not part of this. They're, they did not set up the zoning. So I just want the people to understand that that title zoning board, different than you might think. Now, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not going to talk about warehouses anymore. What I'm going to talk about is the fact that Saturday, September 24th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., is the final in our Franklin Day series here at the municipal complex. It will be the largest of the, of the community celebrations. Food trucks, the township departments will be represented, as well as nonprofit organizations with vendor booths, children's activities, a concert at the gazebo. It should be a fun day, pray for good weather. 1 to 5, Saturday, September 24th, for that. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about, which is what Councilman Vasanella touched briefly on, was that we did in fact have our annual 9/11 memorial service. The 9/11 memorial service, while I know it means a lot to many people, it has multiple meanings for me. One, as a police officer on 9/11/2001, obviously it had an impact on me for that particular reason. But also, I had the honor to work with the Public Works Department to design and build our 9/11 memorial. It was actually about 10 years ago right now that it was, well, it would have been 10 years, I guess about a month ago, that it was completed, because it was about a month or so before I became Township Manager, that we completed it, and we had it in place for the 2012, which was the first time we had it, a 9/11 memorial service at our, at our 9/11 memorial in front of the library. So I would just like to take this opportunity, as I'm talking, to thank several people who were part of the ceremony. I'd like to thank, first off, Bo Burdis, the Director of Recreation, Wendy White, the Deputy Director, and most importantly, Meyer Jimenez, who is our Special Events Program Coordinator for putting this, the program together. Karen Ulla, who sang the National Anthem, and also America the Beautiful to conclude it. Our Police Department Honor Guard, in particular, retired Officer Rich Allen on bagpipes, and Rich Hart, current Officer Rich Hartnett on drums, as part of the, they're part of the Somerset County Pipe and Drum Band. And they were there to give us some of the musical aspect of the Honor Guard. Pastor George Moninari of the Middlebush Reform Church, who did the invocation and benediction. Of course, our mayor, Phil Kramer, with the reflections on his memories of 9/11. And it's a very touching service every year. I would encourage anyone who's, has the opportunity, generally we have it, last year we had it on 9/11. We usually have it on this council meeting immediately before or following, depending on how the date falls. And the reason we do that is because the Fire Department, we lost a resident in Franklin Township, John Collins, who's a member of the New York Fire Department, actually went to high school with John's brother. And that's John M. Collins is the name of our road here, our ring road in the municipal complex. They, they hold a service at St. Matthias Church on 9/11, and it conflicted, so the Fire Department had asked if we could have it on the council meeting night. So that's why we generally have it on the council meeting night that falls closest to 9/11. So keep it in mind for next year. It's, it's a very nice service. Oftentimes, some of the family members of survivors, who, of people who were residents of Franklin or had a connection to Franklin, like John, he no longer lived here, obviously he lived in New York City, but he really was raised here in Franklin Township. Family members are here, too, and it's an opportunity to just reflect on, on something that we should all reflect on. So, end of preach. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So any of you often leave at this time? If you do and want to congregate lobby, you're welcome to, but please close these doors of the meeting. There is no council discussion item. We're on to now number 10, approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for approving, for approval. The work session of August 9th, 2022, to have a motion to accept those minutes.
Shall I move?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Change anything? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Approval of the warrants and the amount of $20,821,425.86 on September 13th, 2022, are presented to Township Council for pavement. Do we have a motion and a second?
Shall I move?
Second.
Any discussion, anyone want to pull an item? Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Item number 12, public hearing and adoption on ordinances on second reading. So all of these ordinances have been presented on first reading to announce basically that we are going to eventually be voting on the ordinance, and now they're at a second reading where we will vote on passage or not passage of the ordinance. Each of these is going to have a public hearing. At that time, you can only speak about that ordinance, not other things. So we'll start with ordinance number 4374-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County at Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 260, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, Park Rules and Regulations, Section 260-6, Prohibitive Activities, is presented for the public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Basically, these are correcting some of the errors in the ordinances about what can be done at public parks, particularly freedom of speech. Our ordinances were not in compliance with the Constitution, and finally realized that, and we are, this will change that to make it compliance with First Amendment speech. Do we have a motion on the ordinance?
Shall I move?
Second. Moved in second, and any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Should have been a motion to the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. So first, we have to open to the public. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Shall I move?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor of opening to the public on this item only, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried, if you have say about this item.
Kiki Anastasakis, 3204, enclave circle. I just have a quick question. With regards to this particular ordinance, because I haven't read it, are you adding the protection of freedom of speech in parks, or what exactly, how does it refer to?
So the ordinance, the ordinance says that you can't have public speeches in parks, in our parks, and that's ridiculous.
So you're changing that?
We're changing it so you can have.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Stop me if this isn't relevant, but there's a permit, is there not, for public speaking or for gathering in a park in Franklin Township? There is a permit.
Yep.
And am I correct that there's a 60-day waiting period for some reason on that permit?
No, there's a requirement, there's a requirement for a special event, not, not any, but if you are hosting a special event in one of our public properties, you're required to apply for the permit at least 60 days in advance.
Are there exceptions, Manager?
There shouldn't be, but obviously, based on special exceptions, there are certain times where there are exceptions that, that, but in all honesty, there's a number of staff members that need to review these applications. You know, if you're having a carnival in one of our parks, there's a, no, but I'm saying, that's, that's a special event. So there are certain events that require far much more effort in the review of their applications. Things like, you know, a dog show in the county park, which is a hu, I mean, it's a huge undertaking, is that there's a lot of work involved in the review of that application. When there's a very small event, not so much work.
Okay. Where would you put something like a candidate forum, if you wanted to do something outdoors?
Like a what?
A candidates forum. Because, you know, we got the elections coming up. And if we did want to do something outdoors, would that maybe?
Yes, if it's open to the public, it's a special event, and it requires a special event permit, and it requires to be, and since you're telling me you know about it now, it needs to be in conformance with the ordinance.
Well, this isn't planning, this is, you know.
Well, you asked me a question, and my answer is it should conform with the ordinance.
What about the exception? Do you think we might?
What I'm saying is, I don't think that that's an exception, no.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is, certain times, things arise in our world that happen immediately, right?
Right, right.
That's what I'm, I'm not something that you know that Election Day is in November, and it's the first Tuesday after the first Monday, every time we roll around to November. So you know that, so that's not an exception if you're planning something in our park related to Election Day.
Understood, and thank you. I guess part two of this is, obviously, we have freedom of speech. I mean, we know that. If we wanted to have a gathering in a park, in one of our parks, say Colonial Park.
A county park, so don't say Colonial Park, we don't have any jurisdiction.
Okay, one of our Township Parks, and I didn't get a call back on what they are, so I gotta, I'm a little ignorant, I don't really know which ones they are, but say we, we did pick one. Do we need a permit to, to have a impromptu gathering?
If you want to reserve one of our facilities, yes. If you just want to go to the park, no. Anybody can go to the park.
As long as.
If you want to reserve the picnic pavilion, so that there's no doubt that you have it, there's a fee involved with reserving it, and you have to get a permit for that, yes. If you want to reserve a ball field, if you want to reserve a basketball court, they all require permits if you want to ensure that you have full use of them without interference for someone else. If you get to the park and somebody's already playing baseball on the baseball field, you don't get to use it unless you have a permit.
Okay, all right. So say this scenario, okay? We're going to have this get-together, and we're all going to be moving around, and we're going to be talking, and we're going to be discussing, I don't think we need a permit, right? As long as we're moving?
Only to the park, I mean, people go to the park every day.
Okay.
You're, you're, I don't know if you're being specifically.
I'm not being facetious, sir, and I'm not being.
Moving around, what is, I don't know what moving around is to you, but I mean, if you're going to the park and you're going out to exercise on the park, on the walking trail, and you're talking to your friend who's standing next to you, obviously you don't need a permit for that. If you want to reserve something, or you're inviting people to the, from the public to attend your event, you need a permit.
I understand, as long as we're walking. Can the attorney address that? As long as we're walking, we're moving.
Manager's being very clear, I think you're trying to figure out some kind of hypothetical that's, I have no idea what you're, what you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about a gathering of residents who are moving.
It's not relevant to the changes that we're making.
Right, and moving has nothing to do.
Okay.
I mean, you can all sit in the park and not move, if you just go to the park and you all want to get together and have a get-together, you don't need a permit for it. If you are inviting the public to an event, whether it be a rally, a sale, a concert, of any type of thing where the public is invited, maybe you're serving food, maybe you're not, there's these things, all of those things require a permit. If you go to the park and hang out with your friends, people do that every day. Go visit one of our parks, you'll see them do it. If that's what you want to do, go right ahead and do it, you don't need a permit, obviously, for that.
Thank you, Manager.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Anyone else come forward, motion to close public session.
Second. Moved in second, and all in favor of closing public session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We already have a motion in second on the option, on the item. Madam Clerk. Little curveball I threw you. We should do it that way.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number 4375-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County at Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly, new chapter 235, municipal gazebo, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. To have a motion to open to the public.
Shall I move?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public on this item only. Briefly, this is the rules of how to use the gazebo, when you can rent it, or when, and you can use it for political activity when you can't, and how much it costs. Go and come forward.
Motion to close.
Second.
In second, and all in favor of closing the public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Oh, do we have a motion on the item?
Shall I move?
Second.
First, I forgot this discussion, then I forgot the item. Moved in second, and anyone, any?
I seconded.
Yes, I, any discussion on the item? Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yep.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
So it is law. Ordinance number 4376-22, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County at Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 50, Police Department, Section 50-7, ranking officers, applicable regulations, Section 50-11, promotion to sergeant, lieutenant, and Section 50-12, promotion to captain, is presented to, for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion for public hearing?
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public on this item. Just kind of cleaning up some furbage in our section on the police, aye with what we're actually doing.
Mayor, seeing no one from the public looking to come forward, a motion to close the portion of the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public hearing on this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Fire, do we have a motion on the item?
The move.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number 4377-22, an ordinance to amend the municipal code, chapter 226, vehicles and traffic, more particularly, code section 26-10, stopping or standing prohibited at all times on certain streets, adding Metler Road, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, so we have a motions open to the public.
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried, we're open to the public on this item.
Kiki Anastasakis, 3204 enclave circle, when you say Metler's Road, does that include the entire length of Metler's?
No, the other section between Weston Road and Amwell Road is already no parking.
Okay. So, so the?
It's only Weston Road to Schoolhouse.
Weston to Schoolhouse?
Correct.
But south of Weston, they can?
Already no parking.
It's no parking, but they can stand and they can stop.
So the ordinance was established through the park and out to Amwell Road. The truth of the matter is, it's a multiple violation if you were to stop on the side of the road. There's another part of the statutes, the motor vehicle code, that says you have to allow a certain amount of feet from the outside of your vehicle to the opposite edge of the road. The road's too narrow for that, so there's no, there's, you won't be able to stop either. It's, the, the ordinance was adopted before my time for no parking and there's absolutely no reason to amend it.
Thank you. And finally, when you say vehicles, does that include trucks as well, vans as well as?
All motor vehicles.
A passenger car.
A motorized moped is a vehicle.
Okay.
Anything, anything motorized in the motor vehicle code.
Got it, thank you.
Hi, Jan Bryant, 22 Bryant Court. So with that, with that ordinance, already Metler's Road not allowed any 18-wheeler trucks, right?
So currently, so, and I, and I, and I think I've addressed this in, in other meetings, but what does that have to do with no stopping or standing?
Okay, yeah, no, I just want to make sure.
This is only about the no stopping or standing ordinance, Mr. Bryant.
Okay, and so when this happens, like if I see, because I always see cars stopping or standing, who am I supposed to contact?
The police department enforces the motor vehicle code.
Okay, so always call the police department?
They're the only ones that are authorized under the law to enforce the motor vehicle code, unless you wish to issue a summons, which you also have the right to do if you want to go to municipal, get the license plate of the vehicle and can identify the driver.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
I just want to get a little clarification. If you're heading from Schoolhouse down Metler's to Weston, what does that solid yellow line, what is that doing there on the right side of the road if not a place to pull your vehicle over?
A solid white line, not a yellow line.
I thought it was yellow.
The shoulder, no, white lines on the shoulder, yellow line.
It's very broad, though. It's a very broad, I mean, we're not talking just, you know, a foot or two, manager, we're talking enough to park my large-sized SUV.
Yeah, and you're not allowed it once it's a no stopping or standing.
Well, why?
There are many roads that have shoulders, if it's, if you're broken down, that's fine. It's provided there for the safety, as the wider the road, the safer the road. So you provide shoulders, that gives an escape if a deer runs out in front of you. There's a number of reasons why you would have a road other than the width of 24 feet, which is the width of two lanes. It's for safety, that's why you have a shoulder.
Okay, all right, so.
It provides safety. Not a place to park.
So given this scenario, that that wide lane, that a fairly large SUV can park in and not obstruct traffic right in the lane next to it, okay, needs to park for a couple of minutes because of an issue, who knows? You know, glasses fell on the floor of the car, you know, we're all getting older, this happens. Cell phone dropped, you know, not that you're looking at it, but you know what I'm saying, okay? This stuff happens. And can that, can the vehicle pull over still or are you going to take that line out?
It's a shoulder line, and the line's not being removed.
Okay.
It's not a parking lane, it's a shoulder.
No, no, it's not a parking lane, I agree, but it's a safety lane.
A shoulder, it's by definition, that's what it is.
Is it a safety lane, though?
No.
That you can?
A shoulder. A lane indicates travel, it's not a lane.
A shoulder.
It's a shoulder, that's what it is. That's by definition, in the, in the, in the engineering part of the, this, this question and in the traffic?
Okay.
Motor vehicle code.
Do we have, do we have many other examples of this kind of?
Sure we do. Easton Avenue has shoulders and you can't park on that, it's no stopping or standing. Hamilton Street has shoulders, and that's no stopping or standing, many.
Okay, all right, well then, you know, I've used it, I've used it as an emergency stop.
And if you have an emergency, I'm sure that the police officer will take it into account, using their discretion. It's also afforded them by law.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get clarification on that. This is a very informative session tonight, thank you.
See no one else coming to speak?
See no one else coming to speak, mayor. We'll close, motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, public portion is closed, we have a motion on the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded, anyone have discussion on this item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance 4378-22, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, guarantee, granting a sump pump easement to Fannie R. Fernandez Nunez for the purposes, for the purpose of constructing a sump pump discharge pipe to an existing inlet for 16 Woodland Road, also known as Block 380, Lot 13. On the tax map of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. This is granting permission to root a sump pump pipe so as to not cause accumulation of water on their own and neighboring properties. To have a motions open to the public.
The move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now open to the public. I've neglected to say limited to five minutes per person.
Mayor, seeing no one from the public come forward, a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we're closing the public portion, we do have a motion on the item.
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Onto item, ordinance number 4379-22, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, authorizing a referendum on the establishment of a community energy aggregation program is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. To have a motions open to the public.
The move. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open to the public on this item only, limited to five minutes per speaker. Back in January, the council was presented with a petition that, that put out, that created a referendum on this November's ballot for an energy aggregation plan. It was, the actual plan itself was felt by council to be poorly designed, so council has, under long negotiation, come up with what we feel a better plan. A major part of the plan is, we don't do it unless it saves people money, and also that it saves, it uses renewable energy. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so.
Mayor, seeing no one coming to speak on public portion of this hearing, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now ready for a motion on the item. Public session is closed.
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, does anyone have discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
You're not amending? Not amending the ordinance? Sure? Okay.
Wait, whoa, 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 you're talking about the interpretive statement?
No, I'm talking about, there was an added sentence to, to the ordinance.
Should it be read, just so everybody's on the same page, Mr. Attorney, or if you're comfortable with it, we could proceed?
Do you have it?
The last bullet point on, on the ordinance was, there was added, the 100% renewable option will not be subject to the 5% savings limitation.
Correct, and that is, that is shown in red on the ordinance, Mr. Mayor, shown red on the ordinance, that's, that's on, on your screen probably, that was, correct?
Correct.
Do we need to?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to add that to the ballot question. And it's non, it's non-substantive, Mr. Mayor, so it doesn't require, it doesn't trigger a new public?
So would you like to make a motion on that wording?
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in, yeah, I can do this by acclamation. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So we are now going to vote on the amendment?
On the ordinance as amended.
As amended.
Thank you. You earned your pay this week.
Wait, go ahead, Marie.
So, okay.
To the vocal?
Yes, please.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Truly, thank you, Anne Marie, that was good eyes. We are now on to, that was all the second readings, we are now on to the first readings, ordinance number 4380-22, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, amending chapter 46 of the municipal code to reflect limitations on accrual of vacation time pursuant to NJSA 40A:9-10.3. The foregoing ordinance presents to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with the law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on September 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Council chambers. We have a motion to introduce.
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, basically?
So, you want, you want to go or you, you got, you got. So, there were a number of benefit reforms that were passed, they, they were referred to as chapter two and chapter 78, which were passed in 2010 to 2011. Recently, the state office of the Comptrollers did a review and it is the Comptrollers position that there are some provisions, and it's not just Franklin, it's a, a number of towns, I guess about 60 across the state, concerning the, the, a common practice that was in our collective bargaining agreements for the buyback of sick time and the payment of, of how we paid for accrued both vacation and sick time, we are now just correcting our ordinances to reflect what essentially is our current practice and is, just to, just to conform our ordinances to the Comptrollers report. This one and the next one, yes?
Correct. And, Mr. Manager, we've, while the ordinance didn't state it, we've been in compliance with the law and have not spent extra money.
That's correct.
So, did we have a motion and a second? Good. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes. Ordinance 4381-22, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, amending chapter 46 of the municipal code to reflect changes in the sick leave vacation accumulation at retire, and at retirement policy. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on September 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Council chambers. We have a motion on the item.
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
We are now at the consent agenda. Motion of this meeting, these consent agendas presented to Council for adoption. We have a motion to, on the consent agenda.
The move.
The move, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anyone want to pull an item or discuss an item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Through some issues here, I need to pull RNS, vote on that separately as part of the consent agenda, as, as another part of the consent agenda, so I can abstain from RNS[1697.83] from RNS because of conflict of interest.
So you are not, so were you asking for RNS to be voted on separately?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, any council member has the right to do so, so we will now be voting, yeah, so we will now be voting on A through Z with the exception of RNS. Does anyone else want to pull an item or discuss an item? Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
So items RNS, we can vote on together, do we have a motion on RNS?
They'll move.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on RNS?
The only thing I need to say is that for the resolution number S, for the supporting applications for retail licenses, I do have a concern about the type of the establishment being close to the youth center.
Is particular establishments close to the youth?
There's some that border Hamilton, but I don't know particularly if they're near the youth center.
I couldn't, I pulled up the resolution and legislate for some reason.
I'm just saying the addresses are, are all on that list somewhere.
I saw the addresses on the cultivator, manufacturer, wholesale, and distributor, but I did not see the addresses on the retail.
The retail, the, the nearest one is probably 855 Hamilton Street. So Lewis Street being two blocks off Hamilton Street, it's no closer than, there, there's none, I mean, it would be on Hamilton Street, but two blocks from, and 855 is in the, so in the general vicinity of De Van Coe, that, that area, so, it's a little closer to Franklin Boulevard. There's also one that's applied at 781 Hamilton Street, so, the 720 Hamilton Street, those are in the general vicinity of Hamilton Street, near Pershing, that area. Now, that's, that's, you know, we can't assume that those particular locations will be granted licenses, but those are ones that would be the closest, Councilwoman.
Well, I'm not trying to put fuel on the fire, but, and I understand your concern, but just like, I mean, if one gets located in a certain strip mall, it could be right next to a daycare center, so, again, I'm not, I'm just saying that, not to be insensitive to what you're concerned, the center, but if we start trying to, how am I going to put this? We could and should, and I think we'll be very diligent in following how this rolls out, like I was talking about earlier, but the time to have gone and like carved up ge, more intense geographic scrutinization, scrutinizing of this, I'm going to say is well in the past for what we have in front of us, I'm not here to support, condone, or condemn it, I'm just saying, but going forward, that's what I was asking the attorney about earlier, that as we see if and how many and where we can regulate within whatever bounds we legally can to deal with what really is a kind of a completely new, new world in respect to our not ever having to deal with this kind of thing before, so, I don't know if that helps, but.
Okay, so you're satisfied with?
Call for the vote.
Okay.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
No.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Those who couldn't hear, Councilman Wright, he abstained.
Abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, in reference to that, I don't think we should do this on an ad hoc basis, please put this on the amend, on the admin committee, see if we need to make any amendments.
The admin committee agenda, it all goes together.
Microphone, yes, sir.
After she did?
She sets the agenda for that meeting as well.
As she did a wonderful job, and now you're, okay, downhill, downhill it goes.
Damn, I should have never pulled that one.
Resolution 15, to be voted on separately. There are none, item number 16, all business, does anyone have any nominations for boards, committees, commissions, for any vacancies? Hearing none. Resolution 22349 is presented to council to authorize an executive session updating pending litigation, ordinance number 4371-22, to denounce of council for their consideration and adoption. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
They'll move.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
The council is about to go into executive session to discuss litigation, the only business that will take care of after would be to close the meeting, so we're going to stop recording at this point.